Good evening. At seven o'clock, I would like to open the Town of Barnstable Town Council meeting for February 28th. I would ask if anybody in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 is, I must ask if you're recording this meeting. If so, please make your presence known to me. Hearing none, I'd ask our lovely Assistant Clerk to give us a roll call, please.
Counselors. Beeden Bender, here. Crocker.
Here.
Hullem.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapkisiti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep, here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley. Wallace.
Here.
Thank you, Janet. Could I ask you all please rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the record, Janet, Councilor Tinsley told me he'd be with us about 8:15. Thank you. I'll open this portion of the meeting to public comment, and I will remind everybody, as I did last meeting, that item 2019-042 is closed for public comment, so this would be the time to talk about that as well. Green light.
Yep. Used to use these with the school committee in Yarmouth, so I know very well how they work. My name is Steve Edwards. I'm a CPA, and my office is at 720 Main Street, and tonight you are going to execute a regulatory agreement between the Town of Barnstable and 720 Main Street Residency LLC.
Steve, could I ask one favor?
Yep.
There is a motion going to be put forward to move that till May.
Okay.
I'm sorry that we were not able to save you from the trip, but you're welcome to either have your say now or have your say again when it's before us.
Well, I can have to say it both times.
Oh, sure.
Okay, cool.
We're very good that way.
Well, it just seems that the process has been...
Save the punchlines for the best, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we're kind of, change is good, but at the same time, bad change is not good. And I think to have in a four-story building next to our area and in that whole area is wrong, and it's kind of out of place. We're concerned about parking. We're concerned about runoff, even though that they've talked about it. And I just think the building is too big for that area. One of the reasons that have made that area successful in the past is that you had a restaurant there, and I'm sure a lot of you people remember it, okay? The businesses were during the day, the restaurant was at night. So if there was an overflow of the businesses, the parking, the business, they already had enough spaces because the restaurant wasn't full during the day. Same thing at night, when the restaurant was full and busy, the businesses weren't open, and what was happening here is that the overflow of the parking for the restaurants went over to where we had. I just think it's too big. They're talking about 40 units. You know, if everyone has a car, that's 80 parking spots. They got 40. There's some easement issues that are going to come into play here that we're not too sure about. I know on our property, we don't have a problem with that, but I just think we, there has to be a thought process, and I think, I didn't like the way the planning board did it, and how it went through the planning board, and how it was cut off, and certain things were not addressed, and I think it has to be addressed before something like this gets across. And if you're going to have up on the top floor three bedrooms apartments, and that means there's families, where are the kids going to play? Where are the kids going to have the bicycles? What about during the day when there's, if you go by there, you know, sometimes that's a cut through? You know, I just think it's wrong, and I just think we have to, we have to do something with that area, but at the same time, we've got to do something that's smart. So I'm a, most of the people we talked to in that area are opposed to it. I'm sure you've gotten letters, so I think we, you know, I'd like to see us do it. And then what day in May is this going to be postponed to?
Yes, this is, provided the council is so willing, it would be continued at the request of the applicant until May 16th.
Okay.
And on May 16th, you'll be asked to wait until the item is called. There'll be a public meeting, and you'll speak at the public meeting.
Okay, because usually how it worked was that you have public comment, and that's when you had your chance, and then you guys deliberated, so.
It depends on if there's a call-public meeting.
Okay.
We're going to have a call-public meeting for the item at the time of the item.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
My name is Dennis Etzkorn, and I'm Barnstable Trust, 720 Main Street also. It says in my deed, I'm 720 Main Street. I don't know if you guys were in receipt of my letter that I sent to Ruth Wise and to the planning board and to, you know, that shows, I'm more along the legal aspect of this. You guys are, at the way the building is currently designed, you guys are granting an easement on top of Armstrong Trust, I mean, you're granting a building permit over the top of Armstrong Trust easement, over the top of, I forget his name, the insurance guy on the right, he has a, he has a parking easement across the entire lot. I have a parking easement across the entire lot, and these guys, if you, this property has always been looked at as one big property. That's why we all have 720 Main Street listed in our deed. If you look at the property as a whole, we were all giving parking easements because he had a restaurant in the middle. So we're all short parking, so we use his during the day. That's why we were given a parking easement. That's why the buildings were allowed to be built originally. I am, I think, 18 spaces short. I think everybody is about 18 spaces short. So collectively, if you look at it as a whole, we'll be 80 spaces shy. In addition to that, the guy on the front right is the insurance guy. He literally, they're in, they've been negotiating with him all along to give him 12 spaces, which they've been to the planning board and counted as their 12 spaces. You know, I just don't think this plan was really done on the up and up, and there's a ton of legal issues with it that have not been resolved, you know? I mean, I'm not going to let him build over my parking easement and make my building where I don't have any parking, you know? I have a church in there that is on Sunday, of course, but it's, you know, 30, 35, 50 strong, probably more than I'm allowed, but I literally have a parking easement over every spot in his space, as well as the Armstrong Trust does not, as far as I can tell, but the other two buildings do. And I am not, and I can't believe the town would allow to, a building permit to go on top of other people's recorded easements. I mapped it out pretty well in my letter, you know? I gave you deed references and plans, and all you've got to do is look at them, and somebody should be able to make, I assume that's why it's being delayed, but I don't know. But, you know, I don't know if this is the time for me to do it, but I figured I'd take two bites at the apple, too.
We're happy to see you.
Yeah, yeah.
But we did post it, so I'm comfortable to ask people to have a moment with us, but truthfully, moving to May 16th, we'd like to see any information the first of May, as much as you can possibly pull together. We will have a chance to review it as councilors. We disseminate between ourselves. This group is very good about preparing themselves, their homework before they come in, and I think you'll find them to be quite educated at the time of our hearing.
But who do I send that actually to? I've had a...
I'll have Cynthia meet you. She's under the cranberry, or the pumpkin over there, and she'll give you an address or an email.
Pumpkin.
She's our administrator.
Okay.
Cynthia.
And that is that Cynthia?
Lovell. She's our administrator.
Okay.
She does all the circulation of the paperwork.
I will make sure you guys all get this letter.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And get it disseminated around. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt O'Connell, and I am the owner of MRK Enterprises, which is 710 Main Street on one end and 385 North Street on the other. My building has two tenants. It has Laundromat and Sylvester Consulting on the other end. I'm very concerned because right now, on the weekend, we don't have enough parking as it is. The, I have, I just stopped by there recently on a Saturday, and I have pictures of the parking lot on a Saturday full of cars, the way it stands right now between the Laundromat and Sylvester Consulting. That's a educational business for teaching firefighters, policemen, you know, EMT-type classes. So, you know, my concern is that if we get a four-story building with all these bedrooms and cars and peoples, that it'll put those two businesses under a tremendous strain with no parking. So, you know, I realize, I'll be brief, I realize we have to come back in May and talk about this again, but I've been quiet up till now, and I think it's very important that, you know, where we're going to be directly impacted, you can't get much closer to where that building is proposed to be built than where 385 North Street is parked. So it's, and it's been there forever, so it's, you know, it's a, it's a great business, and it will be severely impacted by a four-story building with all these cars. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia will be back in the room in a minute if you want to get some information from her about emailing or so forth.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I did not, I was caught unaware, my name is Dan Creedon. For the record, I represent 720 Main Residences LLC. I was caught unawares this evening. I didn't even realize that we were going to be taking testimony on this. I obviously came in late. Two gentlemen that just spoke, we've had, over the course of the last year and a half, sorry, year and nine months, nine public hearings, all of which were advertised and noticed to these abutters. Both of those gentlemen chose not to attend any of those prior hearings. Would have been happy to have discussed any of the issues and concerns that they had throughout the planning board process, the site plan review process, the conservation commission process. Didn't happen. Mr. Etzkorn first asserted a scope of easement that this really...
Dan, could I ask a favor? I'm sorry.
Sure.
They came in and they talked to us. This is under public comment.
Okay.
So please, you're welcome to say anything you want to us.
I understand.
But it should be about us.
Okay.
We look forward to seeing you. We look forward to hearing your day, hearing the discussion on the project, and that is, as I understand it, to be continued to May 16th. Anything you'd like to tell us about the applicant, or anything you'd like to tell us about what the demographics are that would be talking to us at this point, I'd welcome, I'd welcome that.
Appreciate that, Mr. President. So I'll keep it brief, then. We are asking for the continuance. There's three avenues that we can pursue here. One would be to redesign the project. There is a unique design element to this project that would allow us to accommodate the existing easements, both the known easement of Mr. Murray to the east and the asserted easement, which is disputed by Mr. Etzkorn, the scope of his easement. But that's the avenue it looks like we're going to be going, and that's the reason that we're requesting the continuance. Or we can work it out, and that's why we're not asking to withdraw it this time, so we're going to try to leave the door open for that. Or we can go to land court and litigate competing property interests, which is, we'd like to avoid that, but that is also an option because there is case law that supports a servient property holder's right to unilaterally relocate easement interests if they meet certain requirements under a certain case. So that's the reason for the requesting continuance, and so we would like to pursue the first two avenues as possibilities between now and May.
Yes.
And then come back in May and report to the council where we've gone, whether it's with a redesign, going back to planning board and vetting there, and then coming forward here, or some kind of agreement we can work out that makes everyone in the area happy and allows for redevelopment of this blighted property that's been blighted for 12 years.
We're happy to give you the time that's appropriate, so if there are any of those avenues that push us off of the May 16th, we're happy to work with you on that as well. We look forward to seeing you, answering the questions, and thank you for working with the neighbors and the concerns.
Thank you so much.
Zenus Crocker, Barnstable Clean Water Coalition. I want to first thank the council for taking a few minutes at your leisure to take a look at our latest quarterly newsletter. It's about water. That'll shock everybody. I think my position and our position are well-known on zoning-related issues, on water-related issues. I handed out a straw today. Mark Ellis has done a great job talking about this town, talking about the fact that we've got two coasts that were unique, a north and a south coast. We've got over 50 major ponds. Why don't we take a step, and why don't we do something very positive and eliminate plastic straws? Paper straws are available. There's one in everybody's hand. I have more at the back. They're not terribly expensive, and what a great message to send to the state, to the nation, really, to be one of the first towns to step up and say, "We're doing the right things. We've got turtles, we've got people, we've got water we need to take care of." So just an idea, a suggestion, wouldn't it be great? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Linda Edson, Marcin's Mills. I was here three weeks ago and voiced my strong opposition to this new zoning for the Route 28 corridor. It's a horrible idea. I've said that, and selling out Route 28 for growth money, or however you put it, growth dollars, it's not fair to anybody who drives that corridor on a regular basis, especially in the summer, especially when the weather's bad. So I'm curious about one thing. I can't get an answer. Obviously, the answer I did get is, nobody got back to me on my request for the traffic study. I guess you didn't do one. Okay. The Cape Cod Commission did one. I gave everybody a copy of this. They did it 214 to 216, and they have a variety of interim and long-term steps for the corridor to ease the traffic problems, to plant low bushes and low trees for environmental I don't think you've done any of these in two years, and I want to know why. You want to just put more businesses there. If you don't like their traffic study, let's table this thing and do our own, and see what they recommend for that corridor, and I think you're going to find the exact same thing. It's an absolute travesty for you to put any more business in that corridor, and I hope that you would reconsider this and vote no.
Thank you. Anyone else choose to speak? Please.
Well, as you know, I'm Susan Sweet from Centerville, and I'm going to make this one brief because everybody has had a chance to speak before you previous, and many people have voiced their disapproval of this. What I'd like to say is that I haven't heard one person come forward and say they're in favor of this expansion, not even the person who wants to redevelop. Why hasn't anyone come forward in support of this? One idea I've been researching is that all non-conform uses now in effect are grandfathered in for three years with the opportunity to change use by special permitting. Do these non-conforming users need or want a zoning change? Maybe that's why you haven't heard from them. One council person said there are redevelopers waiting to, and this is true, we know that, but what is to be redeveloped? What's to be redeveloped is single-family homes. This is what needs the zoning change. They can't redevelop those homes without a zoning change. And what will those single-family homes become? That's unknown, and is it worth it to rezone so you can lose single-family homes? Another thing I discovered is that my property sits in a resource-protected overlay district zone. Zoning for new construction is now at two acres in an attempt to protect the sensitive area, Long Pond. This expansion would allow new construction on 15,000 square feet, which is just over a third of an acre. That would be six new septics in an area without town sewer. No environmental study was done. This concerns me. Does it worry anybody else? Do we care about Long Pond or our water at all? Another thing I came across is my property is a little unique. It shares a driveway with the abutting property, and also on the other side, there's a shared driveway. The new regulations, number six under the regulations called EXIS, comments about sharing driveways. Does that mean I have to share my driveway with commercial traffic? My house will never be anything but residential, so what happens to that driveway if you pass this? I'd really like someone to explain that to me. It's very unclear in the regulations. And the one thing that this expansion does away with is the people's right to speak. It gives, takes away special permitting, gives businesses by rights, 26. That means that a neighbor can have no say whatsoever. That means that they've lost their right to speak, to protect their property, to protect their children. All rights would go to the new businessperson. That means their freedom of speech is lost. I think we need to look at these areas and note that this, these areas are much, much different than 132. There's so many residents, neighborhoods, children, and we need to protect especially those children in that area, and I found a lot of safety issues as I was reviewing the things. I think there's a better solution than this. We can make everybody happy, but not, this isn't the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let Speaker sign in, please.
Hi. My name is Eileen Hannan. I live in Precinct 2 in Centerville, and I have spoken to a few of the councilors over the past couple of weeks, and they've been able to explain more of what's going on with this. But at this point, I still can't say that I'm for two things. One, I think that Hyannis and Centerville should be separated. Centerville is not Hyannis. It's a nice little village. It has changed a lot in the 30-some-odd years I've lived there, not for the good. But Hyannis has so many more areas that they could put businesses in if it's only the taxes that you're interested in getting. You've got Route 132, you've got the industrial park, and you're not going to invade in any residential areas. Centerville has, we have many empty stores already and many empty office buildings. Let's fill them before we add any more. The traffic is ridiculous. It comes down my street. Had a couple of 18-wheelers again this week, going faster than they should. And I was just talking to a neighbor this afternoon. She won't even walk her dog out on Richardson Road because of the traffic. So I think that besides separating Centerville from Hyannis, I think a lot more discussion should be on this topic. I agree with the fact that if it goes to this new business, that you can, at least from the way I understand it, is that you can ask the non-conforming businesses, some of them in a residential area, become conforming, but I don't know if there's any teeth in that. Can you force them into cleaning up the properties? So I think that this should be tabled for now until we have more discussions on it, and thanks for the councilors that have spoken to me over the past couple of weeks. You were enlightening, but I still can't go for it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Hi, good evening. My name is Felicia Penn. I live in Hyannis, and I'm here to ask you to please table item number 2019-042 indefinitely until such time as the local comprehensive plan, the LCP, is updated as per the recommendation of the planning board's letter of December 6, 2018. Have a copy of the letter here if anybody needs that. You may recall the unanimous vote of the planning board, which provided the town council with a negative recommendation to expand the highway business district. So this has nothing to do with the byright uses, that's, they supported that, but the expansion of the district, and to further study the expansion of the borders of this zone during the update of the LCP. To do anything else at this time runs counter to the long-term vision for the town and the master plans that support it. Expansion of the borders of this zone at this time is premature, to say the least. Extending the zone west of Old Stage along Route 28 is irresponsible without appropriate infrastructure upgrades and clean water safeguards. Pushing the HB zone into residential neighborhoods is in direct conflict with the LCP and the village plans, which state that commercial zoning shall not infringe on residential neighborhoods and that residential neighborhoods are to be respected. I'm not sure where the notion originated that the area within this zone needed to expand. Is there a land use analysis that supports the proposed geographic expansion? Is there a pipeline of projects ready to submit applications looking to build in these areas? Or is this the result of someone just thinking that it's a really good idea with no grounded basis to support the reality? Recently, the town council and the planning board both supported and implemented the expansion of byright uses within the HB, and they expanded at least tenfold more. So why the rush to also expand the borders? Why not wait to see how the development and redevelopment goes for a few years and do an analysis of build-out? And when the current area is close to build-out, or you can see a progression or a trend or whatever it is, then a discussion of border expansion may have merit at that time. Expanding the zone at this time has no value to the community until such time as infrastructure is improved. The whole point of zoning is to provide a public benefit. In this case, the town would be doing a disservice to the public by expanding the borders of this zone absent improvements in infrastructure. Please either vote to withdraw their proposed expansion without prejudice so at some point in time it could come back, or table it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Council. I'm Fred Chorogotis from Precinct 4 in Centerville. I've had the opportunity before to speak to this item during public hearing. I realize public hearings close, so I'll be brief. I keep getting calls about this matter. I refer them to Britt Beeden Bender. I refer them to Matt Levek. I refer to Paul Neary. I refer to Paul Neary and Paul Hebert from, and actually Eric Steinheilber, from people who live in Centerville who are very concerned about the expansion of the borders of the Highway Business District. What I've been told and what I truly believe, the argument that this is a growth or an expansion of property rights is really a misnomer. It's property wrongs. These are residential neighborhoods that are severely impacted. It is very difficult neighborhoods to travel both, I don't know if it's north and south. It's called north and south, but it's really east and west on Route 28. But whatever side of the road you're on, if you try to take a left now, you're in danger. Where we do have Highway Business District right now in Centerville on Route 28, and that would be from Old Stage Road down past Finney's Lane, is probably the most dangerous stretch of roadway in the town. I could name a few other places, but that's pretty, it's a pretty bad area. Before we decide that we want to expand our highway business zone into residential neighborhoods, because that's really what these places are where the expansions occur, we really should have, and I defer to previous speakers, they were excellent. Where's the study? Where's the understanding? Where is the, where is the build-out that we've, that already exists that shows a need for the expansion? The people who live in these neighborhoods are really afraid about their homes. This is a residential area. I ask, now, I do notice that it's a, and I, and the public should know, and I'm sure you read it in, that this is a two-thirds roll call vote. I can't believe that two-thirds of the council would agree that this is a good idea, and I'd ask that either the matter be tabled for further study or that the matter be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else choose to speak?
Yes, hello. I'm back. First of all, I want to thank those of you, towns, town councilors, who I spoke with asking questions, that you responded, and I tried to wrap my head around everything and find, you know, a way that I could live with this change, this zoning. I don't understand it. I can't still understand it. I think everyone who's come up to this podium tonight has said something that I was thinking about or wanted to say. So that's done. So I don't have to say a lot, just that I still don't want it. I don't see where we're ready to expand anywhere. I mean, what are we going to do? Dig up Centerville Cemetery? And we can expand there then, okay? There is a piece of property. But where, you know, how much of it can be done? How much do you want to build into? We're annexed to Hyannis now, which, Hyannis can, has beautiful places. Don't get me wrong. It's just that, and Hyannis shouldn't be stuck with everything. But the buildings get taller. Now you want to go three stories. You know, we don't want to be a city. It sounds like Centerville, really, the people who live there, the residents, us, we don't want a city. You know, we want to keep our village feeling. That's why we moved here. I know it has to grow, but it's, it's growing in the wrong direction, okay? We talked about traffic studies. I, I'm not good on a computer. I'm not really great on a computer, so here we go. But I found something that had to do with the Cape Cod Commission because of Old Stage Road to Beers Way, and it was February 2016. I wanted to look something else up, but I couldn't find where I found it. So if anybody else could, good luck. But there was a study done, not a study, but there, it mentioned a MassDOT and Barnstable police crash study between, it was between 2011 and 2013. And it was between Old Stage Road, the study was on Old Stage Road to Beers Way, okay? So it was, they only mentioned, they only noted the highest crash locations. Now here they are. And this is, I'm going to tell you Centerville, because that's where my interest is right now. So in Centerville, which is a half a mile, if that, from Old Stage Road to Finney's Lane, or maybe now I, Strawberry Hill Road, yes. So it's, it's not much more than a half a mile that length, because I extended it. I didn't know Strawberry Hill Road was in Centerville, so there we go. So from Old Stage Road to Strawberry Hill Road, that short distance, the high crash, there were 389 total crashes between, in those two years, between 211, 2011 and 2013. 389. But the Centerville area, that corridor, all, the highest, were Old Stage Road, 41 crashes, okay? The Centerville Shopping Center, 33. Bell Tower Mall, 27. Finney's Lane, 23. And Strawberry Hill Road, 17. That's the crashes, the highest, okay? That isn't saying the crashes in between. That probably happened, I'd say probably Richardson Road and, and Route 28, I would, but that's not listed because it wasn't high enough. Okay, so the highest, that's, I don't know, that was 141 crashes in two years. That's, say, 70 accidents a year on that half a mile or so? Does that seem like a lot, or is that little? Or maybe we should do more studies and find out, did we go up or did we go down? Or should we, you know, put more businesses in so people could cut in and out? We could have more accidents. I don't know. It seems high. It does. But anyway, so I have to say at this point, I, I don't know. You hear wastewater problems. You hear water problems. You hear, you know, estuary problems. And we want to build out still? Doesn't make sense. I just, like I said, can't wrap my head around it. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did I get your name and have you sign in? I'm sorry.
Elizabeth Ryan. I did sign in.
Thank you very much. Y'all sat in it? Thank you. Any other speakers? Hearing none, I'll close the public portion and ask if there are any council responses to public comment. I'll start on this end. Paul Hebert, please, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if, if I read the report correctly, we're looking at the years, the years of 2011, 2012, and 2013, so it's actually three years. You're correct that it was 389 accidents in the span of that corridor. So that breaks out to well over 125, 27 accidents within that corridor per year. So that's a lot. So we have to look at, you know, what are the realities there? And so the study has been done, and I'm not, I'm not going to vote for another $50,000 study when the commission did it in this recent period of time. I can live with that, that study, which I think you'd admit was very, very extensive, well-done study. But, you know, they, they brought up facts, like it's a 45 mile an hour zone. So I'm sure that our, our DPW and our police department could give us some very, very good advice on what we can do to make that a safer area. Now, if you remember, in the study, there was a long list of things that we could do to make that, that better. I've been thinking about Richardson Road. You know, that's a simple thing of making a decision. You put a sign up. The eighteen-wheelers do not go past Casual Gourmet when they unload their food products. Then they turn around and go back to 28. They don't go back into the neighborhood. They don't stay within that neighborhood. So there are things that we can do, that we should take action to make that a safer corridor, try to save a few accidents, and try to see what we can do to accommodate that. So your points are very, very well taken. And so we're at a philosophical junction here. When you talk about buildings going higher, we have to go higher if we want to accommodate more small apartments so that people have more options of where to live. We're getting very, very close to not having a whole lot more room to expand, and it's not that we want to cut anybody out. We have to make some decisions. So it's very, very difficult to protect, which is a big concern of all of us, to protect the centers of our villages, our villages, Osterville, Centerville, Hyannis. But Hyannis is clearly the hub, not only of the town of Barnstable, but of the, the whole Cape. And so we have like the old Hyannis, if you will, where, where we are, and then we have the 132 corridor, which I call the new Hyannis. So it's very, very difficult. These are difficult decisions. To make no decisions is not any better than to make too many decisions too fast. So everybody's points are very, very well taken, and it's a very difficult thing, and I can't speak for anybody else or how we're going to end up voting on this, but I certainly appreciate how, how many of you have taken the time to come and, and really give us a lot of food for thought. So I thank everybody who has spoken.
I'm working my way from the side. Anybody? Council Steinheilber?
Yeah, just more for information purposes. So I know it can get confusing when we're talking about corridor studies, traffic studies, and what exactly, when do things happen? So the Cape Cod Commission study is a corridor study for 28, which is a state highway. When I was first elected to the council, there was actually hearings in this room where we had large tables set up and the maps of the corridor going from Beers Way up to Old Stage. And there were members of the public that were invited in. There was at least three hearings that I recall, and we'd go along the maps and we'd circle where we thought there was trouble intersections or difficult turns. And the point of that exercise was for them to start talking about how to improve the traffic safety along the roads, whether it be speed, whether it be intersection improvements. So that really started what you've seen, you know, down with Route 28 and Beers Way, intersection improvements by the mall and leading towards Centerville. We did the improvement, it's a state road, so the state did the improvement with the CVS intersection with Strawberry Hill Road, which we had to do an easement for. That was probably about a year and a half ago now. And they're working their way down. So that was the start of that, and that's going back, you know, five, six years ago. So that's a corridor study. So yes, that was done. Traffic studies for proposal or development are very site-specific to what is being proposed for that parcel. So when you talk about traffic studies, especially when you're talking about a state highway, the state will put you through quite a process for the traffic studies, for the curb cuts. They're not interested in granting any more new curb cuts on 28 or 132. In fact, they, they'd like to reduce the number of curb cuts. You saw this, the Strawberry Hill office, the medical office that went up recently. That was a blighted property there. You notice that the original curb cut now is moved down, and that was, part of that was to move it further back from the intersection. So there are safety improvements that happen when new development comes into some of these parcels. So traffic studies are not ignored. Curb cuts are not ignored. And I just wanted to kind of clarify for information purposes how things happen in terms of traffic studies and what's the difference between a development and a site-specific traffic study and a corridor study, which the Cape Cod Commission undertook when they're looking at safety along different corridors. And my understanding is they'll go beyond Old Stage at some point as well, but that was the first piece they were dealing with. So I just kind of want to put that information out for the public certification.
Any other councillors to my right? Yes, Council Rep Crissetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the ladies especially that have sat through the several meetings where this 042 that you've spoken regarding the expansion. So hopefully tonight, something will happen. And I also want to thank especially former councillor Fred Chiragotis for coming out speaking, because he did sit on the council and represented the folks in Centerville who participated in the corridor study and helped to identify the issues of traffic in that area. And also, thanks to Ms. Penn for coming out, who was a previous member of the planning board. And by the way, there is a spot open on the planning board if you're interested in coming back. Love to, love to have you. So I think your, your points regarding the local comprehensive plan are right on. So I look forward to a lively debate on that issue.
Any other councillors to my right? Councillors to my left? Hearing none? Oh, I take it back. I see one. Councillor Cullen?
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the people who came to speak and have been continuing to come to speak to this, and it matters to me how important these issues are to you. And I'm listening to you, and I understand your concerns and your angst about the zoning, and I'm taking it to heart, I promise you that. Also, for Felicia Penn, thank you very much for coming out and saying your piece, too. It's always very important to hear your point of view. And councillor Chiragotis, it's always nice to see you. Thank you. These are, you know, these zoning issues, I, I kind of have to agree with councillor Hebert on how challenging they are, because we do want the growth dollars to, to move forward and, and help us so we can keep these great programs we have. We can keep the senior center. We can keep the HYCC. We can keep all these things. But, you know, there's a, for me, there's a lot of value in a neighborhood. And my neighborhood is, is recovering, I would say, from a really hard go of it over on C Street. And so I have a lot of respect for the neighborhood, and I plan on voting that way. Thank you.
Councillor Levek?
I would just also like to reiterate the appreciation of those who have come and, especially the last meeting, when we didn't even get to it, and you stayed here till 11 o'clock. And so, you know, and, and for those who have come repetitively, and, you know, when, when this all first started, this was an idea that we were looking to try to work with, again, spot zoning, something to try to get something a little bit more consistent. I was excited about doing that because I was on the zoning board, and I saw some things that, quite honestly, I thought was a little bit unnecessary for people to go through. And, you know, I just thought it was an opportunity to try to give people some more rights, that they didn't have to spend so much money on mitigation. I think I've explained that pretty well, that side of the story, so to speak. But I also understand, too, that there's people who are fearful of what might be added or what's going to be on the other side. Unfortunately, we're not dealing with a blank canvas. We're dealing with quote-unquote artwork that's already in place. And we're trying to work within that artwork to try to not have blighted property, one, give people an opportunity in, in, you know, not to, you know, discuss everything, because it'll always, some of these things will always be repeated as, as we come upon the item. But we're trying to create, in a way, there's, there's property that's, that are round pegs, and we're stuffing them into square holes. And we're just trying, I think the idea is to try to create square pegs or square holes so that people can do, you know, whatever. And it's important that, that it's, it's a conversation that can take place under this compromise, you know? And I just hope, you know, we can work something out, because again, it's, it's about getting it right, not necessarily being right on what your specific agenda is.
Councillor Beedenbender?
I would be remiss as well not to say thank you to all of you who came out. A number of you are my constituents, and we've spoken through emails or at office hours, and we've had numerous conversations, so I appreciate that. But I also don't want you to take my silence on commenting on this issue right now as, as in that I'm ignoring your comments. It's that I plan, I have a lot to say when we have the council discussion on it, so I'm holding all of my comments till that point. So I don't want you to take it for, for that, that I have indifference. So thank you. So thank you.
Vice President Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like my fellow town counselors, I too thank you all for coming and giving your comments. I did spend a good amount of time with Ms. Sweet, probably a week or so ago, reviewing a lot of the issues and concerns. And I think for all of us up here on the dais, we've learned probably more than what we knew when this whole process began. And I commend also my former fellow town councilor Fred Chiragotis, thanks for coming, Fred, and speaking on behalf of your former constituents, who are probably still your constituents. And I would also second what Counselor Rap Grisetti said in terms of Felicia, there is an opening on the planning board. You know it well, probably better than most people, and will welcome you back on that particular dais. But I also want to be clear in terms of how this all came about, just to make sure that we're certain that, you know, the Committee to Review Zoning and Permitting Regulations was a subcommittee of this town council. And they had a specific charge to evaluate current zoning regulations, permitting processes, to identify impediments of really becoming more streamlined, more efficient, and using a common sense approach to allow new development, to allow redevelopment, primarily looking at blighted properties, giving new businesses the opportunity to move forward, hopefully in a cost-effective manner. And at the same time, coming up with recommended changes to current zoning and permitting regulations to help address the needs of housing, infrastructure, job creation, and really revitalization and new growth. With all of that being said, knowing the members of that subcommittee who did meet on a regular basis going back a couple of years, and then coming up with a proposal this past October, I'm sure there was, I was not on that subcommittee, but, you know, having been, having spoken with a number of folks who were, there was lots of discussion about how it would impact the neighborhoods. So I want to be sure that everyone is clear that this was not just done as a knee-jerk reaction to try to support business. So all of that has been taken into consideration and will be addressed, I'm sure, when we actually open up O-42. But also know that it came to us as a full council with the recommendation of the subcommittee. It came with a positive vote, if you will, for us as a full council to consider it. And, you know, over the past couple of months, we've had good debate, good discussion, and I'm sure it will be even more lively this evening when this particular item is open. So I want the public to know, especially the residents from the Centerville area who have been attending all of the meetings, and I thank you and also apologize to some of you for not getting this done at the last meeting, and you sitting here till 11 o'clock when we decided to do it tonight. But nonetheless, you voiced good thoughts, good opinions, and all of that will be part of the debate and the discussion tonight. And so thank you for coming and voicing your opinion. With that being said, I'd like to move off of the O-42 item and ask Z. Crocker a particular question. Z, you gave us paper straws tonight. I remember these when I was a kid, you know, having recess in school and getting your milk and getting a paper straw. Has there been any support from the Chamber of Commerce, either Hyannis or the Cape Cod Chamber? Has there been any analysis done in terms of if I owned a XYZ store and I went to paper straws from plastic straws, what's the advantage? Above and beyond, you know, obviously helping the environment, which I support 100%, you know, having applauded the fact that the council, when it did eliminate plastic bags, it seems that the business community and the public has been able to survive okay. I'm just curious what the impact of that would be, or if that has been done, or will there be a report coming forward?
Counselor Flores, I think that's an excellent idea, and I'm really glad you're going to take the leadership position on this, because it needs to be done, it should be done, and I want you to do it. I've got the Aardvark case right here. I went on vacation. I hadn't seen a good paper straw since I was a kid, and I was told they really didn't exist. And I bought a bunch of steel straws, which I hate. And I found out, guess what? You can buy them. They're actually in really short supply. I'm sure that will change over time. So no, I don't know that. I'd love to work with you on it, or anybody else in the council, I have the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just a point of information on the straw, so a straw. Chronicle did a piece that quite a bit of straws, paper straws are made in Massachusetts, so that's kind of an interesting issue, too. Again, leaders, Massachusetts. When it comes to my role here, as we're trying to do our business of the day, I'm certainly concerned about everybody who has to ride the bench. Last week was, two weeks ago, was an exceptional time where we were trying to make sure all of the people who were riding the bench had a chance to be heard, because those hearings had an actual public hearing portion. We've been closed for some period of time on O-42. I'm more than happy to invite you, and I have made that announcement every time, for anybody who's here for O-42 to please come forward and speak in the public process so that you're not forgotten. But at any time you so choose, you're more than welcome also to go home, turn on Channel 18, and enjoy it, because there is no public process in this portion of that hearing, as we've said on numerous occasions. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for your participation throughout. I've seen a number of you here a number of times. With that said, I would suggest that we need to bring forward the town manager for the Town Managers' Communications.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Before I begin my communication, I wanted to share with you on behalf of the Youth Commission, two quick communications. I'll let you know, and I know that they've already communicated with you, relevant to their fifth annual youth summit that's coming up on March 15th at the Cape Cod Community College, 9:30 a.m. until 1:30. They invite you all, if you have time, to come up to the Grossman Commons, and they'll involve you in all the goings-on that day. I also wanted to take the time to point out the third annual youth job fair that's also put forward by our Barnstable Youth Commission. This is an opportunity for youth from across Cape Cod to come together and to not only meet potential employers, but to talk about preparing resumes, cover letters, interview techniques. So it's a wonderful opportunity for the youth of our region to have this experience, and I applaud in both cases the Barnstable Youth Commission. They're doing a great job on our community's behalf. Town Managers' Update for the period of February 8th through February 28th. We are proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2020 as scheduled. The FY 2020 capital budget and FY 2020 through 2024 capital improvement plan has been submitted to the town council and posted on the town website under the Finance Division FY 20 Capital Improvement. It's also on the homepage as well. Town Council is scheduled to conduct their first reading of the FY 2020 capital budget orders on March 21st. The town has received its annual finance audit report from Powers &amp; Sullivan certified accountants. The town received an unmodified or clean opinion on its financial statements. Two accompanying reports, the schedule of expenditures on federal awards and management letter, were also received. The report on federal awards did not identify any deficiencies in the internal controls that they would consider to be a material weakness, and the town complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements on each of its major federal programs for the year. The management letter offers suggestions for strengthening internal controls and operating efficiencies, and these reports are all available on the town's website. We continue our discussions with Fish and Wildlife regarding the future potential to site water supply wells on the 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts the Hyannis public water supply. The town continues to work with Mass. Fish and Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells on the 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. We submitted our recommended, proposed public water supply well locations and associated withdrawal information on January 18th, 2019. Following the January federal shutdown, Mass. Fish and Wildlife informed us that the USGS was delayed in proceeding with the review of the most recent information from Barnstable. We are in continuous communications with Fish and Wildlife and USGS as they complete their review and anticipate a progress meeting shortly. So they are working on that, we're just waiting for when they complete it. They're behind. The Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the town of Barnstable and the Cape Blue Economy Foundation, announced today they received a million-dollar grant to create Expedition Blue, a major step toward the regional branding of the blue economy. Funded by Governor Baker's Seaport Economic Council, Expedition Blue will create a network of interconnected permanent installations at sites that tell the story of the Cape Region's connection to the sea, our place in the world ocean research and discovery, our fishing and aquaculture heritage, and our strong inventory of blue economy institutions and industries, among other topics. And I've included that press release in your package so that you can review it. I reported to the town council at your last meeting that I had attended a meeting of legislators, state agencies, and municipal officials to discuss the implementation of the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. Our specific discussion focused on the Act's establishment of a management board and its duties relevant to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. Within the Act in Section 20, it states that there shall be a Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board that shall consist of one person to be appointed by each Board of Selectmen or Town Council in each municipality that is a member of the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, provided, however, that an appointee of a Board of Selectmen or Town Council shall be a member of the respected Appointing Authority, Town Manager, Town Administrator, or other municipal employee, I'm sorry, municipally-employed professional staff. I encourage the town council to appoint said board member expeditiously to assure that Barnstable is formally represented. I also brought to your attention the duties of the board as stated in the Act, and specifically, the management board's duty shall be limited to determining the method for subsidy allocation, including but not limited to an equitable distribution among participating municipalities consistent with revenue deposited from each municipality into the fund and to ensuring that the money from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund is spent only for the purposes in Section 19. Section 19 is determined by DEPA, relevant to whether the project is eligible. After much discussion on the intent of this section in the Act, I requested through our Finance Director that our Bond Council provide an opinion on the duties on the management board. Specifically, does the board simply review funds deposited from each municipality against equitable distribution of said funds to the communities from which the fund was generated, or does the board have greater discretionary authority to redistribute these funds? What that, my question was, do you get dollar-for-dollar back, or does the board have the discretion to distribute these funds as they see eligible and appropriate? The opinion of Bond Council was that the board has greater discretionary authority to redistribute these said funds. That means that it doesn't have to go back dollar-for-dollar. We have taken this opinion under review and are preparing proposed modifications to said language for consideration. At this time, I'll ask Mark Mill, Director of Finance, to provide the town council with an update relevant to this particular act, specifically, though, related to the proposed model bylaw being offered to communities for consideration. You may have read about that recently in the paper, and I know there's been some questions. So I'll ask Mark to come up and just give you an overview of that.
Good evening, Director Mill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Finance Director Mark Mill, town of Barnstable. I'm passing around now a, the language of the proposed bylaw that you may have read in the paper on Monday. And specifically, what they're looking to do with this proposed bylaw is to take, is to take 50% of the local rooms excise tax that's generated, and for Barnstable, that's that 6%, it's the local excise rooms tax. That's generated from every category of property that's subject to it, hotels, motels, short-term rentals, and so forth, and dedicate it for five specific purposes. This is a suggestion from the coalition that brought this forward, for every community to consider adopting something like this. Put it into a stabilization fund for these five purposes outlined in this language. And this is similar to what we did recently with the host community payments that we negotiated with Vineyard Wind on their project, creating a stabilization fund to dedicate that for our water infrastructure. So what are we looking at for Barnstable on the other side of this page? I provided you a copy of the slide that we presented to you on January 17th. Now, Barnstable has already done something similar to this several years ago through a home rule petition, when we created a comprehensive water management and private way fund. And that dedicates 33% of our local rooms excise tax for those two specific purposes. So we've already done this. So I think what they did is they took the language similar, or they took the idea that Barnstable implemented several years ago and used a tool that was available to communities now that was created under the Municipal Modernization Act, the stabilization fund model. So what we have left in Barnstable to talk about, if we were to model a bylaw similar to what they're recommending, would be what you see in the first column here, that's the revenue that's available. However, the FY 2020 base estimate of $1,982,000, we're already using that to balance our operating budget. So if we were to reallocate that for some other purpose, then we'd have to look, think about reducing something in the operating budget. That's already used to balance our operating budget. The new revenue that we estimate coming in from the short-term rental tax is the $1,190,000. So that's really what we anticipate in new revenue, however, it's going to be a couple of years before that matures, because compliance is going to be an issue, I imagine, when this gets up and running for the short-term rental tax. And we're not going to be able, DOR has already told us that we can't even use any of that to set a budget for fiscal year 2020, because there's no track record. So they're already advising communities, don't plan on increasing any of your local rooms excise tax revenues to balance your fiscal year 2020 operating budgets, because you have no track record as to what that's going to be. So it's going to be at least a year, or 2021, before we can even do anything with this revenue under DOR's guidelines. So I just wanted to, hopefully that clarifies what the coalition that brought this forward is looking to do. They're looking to take some of that general fund revenue, that local excise tax that's going to, that will go to the general fund, and dedicate it for specific purposes, similar to what we did several years ago with the creation of the special revenue fund that we have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, don't be afraid to ask the tough ones here, because we really got to get down to the basis, because we're obviously seeing it coming out all the time here in discussions now. I'll start with my left today, anybody? Counselor Bean, Benner, you have? Vice President Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, Mark, in terms of this coalition that's come together collectively to help decide, determine how the monies would be spent, under the law, the way it was written, wasn't it specified that it would be for water mitigation-related kinds of services? Or was it left open-ended?
The short-term, with the short-term rental tax?
Yes.
It was left open-ended. There was no, the only part that was restricted for comprehensive wastewater management was the 2.75%.
Right.
That's going to the Cape Cod Islands and Water Protection Fund. So that's restricted, that can't be used for anything else. But the 6% that we charge.
The other.
And 4% for other communities, that's all considered general fund revenue, and that's open-ended. So any new revenue that's generated from short-term rental tax, that's generated from that 6% local rooms excise, will go to the general fund, and so it could be used for any municipal purpose.
But the 2.75 is still dedicated towards. to bond council, that's one group's interpretation. I know there's been debate, even as of yesterday, up on Beacon Hill, in terms of interpreting that. There are those folks that are in the legislature that believe it should be one-on-one versus those that feel it should be determined by whomever this committee might be that will be formed in the future. In all likelihood, if it becomes an issue that will be filed as a bill in the legislature, I just don't see that, I just don't see that happening. So could this ever become a challenge in terms of a, of a court case relative to saying we want this money?
If somebody wanted to make it, they could.
Do you foresee that?
Depends on how the governing board exercises its authority. And so, you know, there are, there are other things that could be done, you know, to help mitigate some of that, perhaps changing the legislation to include a weighted vote, similar to what the Assembly of Delegates has. The board could adopt policies that include a supermajority vote, for example, if, when making decisions on distribution of funding. So there are other things that could be done, but if, if it's going to become a lawsuit, that's depends upon whether or not somebody wants to make one out of it.
Well, it was my interpretation, or at least the way I wanted to interpret it, was that a dollar in from Barnstable was a dollar coming back to our town to basically provide services around water mitigation-related kinds of services and products and projects, as well as the other ways that we might distribute those monies. Thank you.
It's great to know the town council wants to fight for the town, huh? Back to Counsel Cullen.
Yes, a quick question about that. The weighted vote is of interest, as it is with the Assembly, but also is there maybe some room to have representatives on the board based upon population of the town? So maybe there's more than one person from Barnstable.
Just for clarification, Mr. Director, we are weaving in and out of two points here.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable to address the point that we're going after.
I think there's going to be an opportunity to address this through legislative change. I think we've been told that, you know, if there are, if we have an interest in trying to provide some modifications to the legislation that was passed, that we could reach out to our legislative delegation and provide suggestions, and that could be one of the suggestions that we give them, which would bring back a legislative proposal to, for them to address to see if they'll change the voting mechanism that's used.
Yeah, and a follow-up, if I could.
Certainly.
Is there, is there a scheduled time where we're to meet with our delegation for ideas to bring forward to represent Barnstable better in this situation? Do we have that? Are we working on that at this point, Mark? Excellent. I'd love to be included in that, please.
Thank you. Counselors? Counselors? Yes?
Mr. President, thank you, Mark. Could you just clarify again, the, if, if the council took no action, would the percentage of the short-term rental tax be split in the 4% and 2% that we currently have for local excise?
Yes. That home rule petition that we have requires us to put 1/3 of any new local excise tax generated from short-term rentals into that special fund.
But we do have the opportunity to possibly look at that short-term rental tax and create a different split than what we have for the rest of that.
Yeah, the $1,190,000 number, yes, we do. That is an opportunity because that's new revenue, so there is an opportunity to discuss how that should be used.
So if we wanted to preserve it for infrastructure uses, whether it's for wastewater or other things, we would need to take affirmative action to make sure that that money doesn't just go into the general fund 4%, then 2%? Right? Okay.
Counselors? Counsel Heebird?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I would point out to all of us counselors that next Friday at the, at our meeting of selectmen and counselors for Cape Cod and the Islands at 8:30 at the Seacrest Resort, we're going to have, the delegation is going to be available to date. Most of our reps are going to be there, and definitely Santa Sear's office is going to be there. And they've asked me what, you know, what are we concerned about? And I said, well, the Cape Cod Water Protection Fund, we need to talk about, that we need to talk about a town's ability to subtract some of that money, put some aside, the 2.75 for that coalition, and what does that mean to the rest of the fund? And certainly, we are the biggest town. We also have some of the biggest problems, therefore, we need the most amount of money. So I would caution us in how we, we speak out in terms of the, the fund. I, I think that because we're the, we're going to most probably also be one of the bigger contributors. Now, some of the, like Province Town is saying here, rental in Province Town could be $20,000 as opposed to a $3,000 rental here in Barnstable. But we do have the size and the numbers. So it's not impossible that we become the largest contributor to the fund so that we have to speak up. And, but at the same time, if there are other towns that are not, have either solved their problem, Chatham's gone a long way, and so has, Howich is digging, and Howich is piping. So some of the others may not need the money. So I want to keep an open mind to the fact that if we're into big projects and our millions keep mounting up to more and more millions, and other towns are not using that fund for their, you know, they're just not ready, they're not moving, then by George, I'd like to get more. So I don't want to tie us in too, too much to a dollar in and a dollar out if we can put a dollar in and get a dollar 25 out. So I just would, I would encourage everybody to, if you can, I know it's, everybody's working, but if we can come to that meeting, the delegation will be there to speak to. And I do think that, again, because we are the biggest, I think we need to put together the best team, including leadership from the council, including the town manager's office, including finance, so that a team member who is appointed, and I have somebody in mind who has been in DPW for a long time, knows our town in and out, knows the finances in and out, who can speak very eloquently to, to protect us, so that we have the best team. I'm thinking of us sending a team that's working close together and represented very, very well on our behalf. So I'm more optimistic than I am pessimistic. Thank you.
Counsel Snep, you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. Mark, could you let us know the mechanism in which we could make a decision to have that short-term rental tax split differently than the 4% and 2%? Does a municipal reform act give us more leeway?
Yeah, there's a number of ways we could do it. We could just build it into the creation of the annual operating budget, similar to what we've done with the capital trust fund already, where we've increased the annual contribution if it was decided to dedicate it to the capital program. So we could do it through the operating budget, or we could adopt another special municipal stabilization fund like we did to address the comprehensive water and fire readiness services that we recently, with those host community payments.
But we don't need to do any home rule petition?
No. That's the nice thing about the Municipal Modernization Act. They wanted to get away from doing all the home rule petitions and give us more authority locally, which was a good thing.
Any more councils in my direction? Follow-up? Just a quick follow-up. Vice President Florence?
I just want to be clear once again that, you know, out of this 6%, the 2.75% is going to go strictly for water-related kinds of projects.
Yes, that's going to that Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund.
Can't change that at all.
Can't change that.
So I want to be sure, just as Counsel Heebird said, you know, for a dollar in, we might get a dollar 25 cents, I also want to make sure that we put a dollar in, we don't just get 25 cents. So, I mean, it's a critical issue that, you know, my interpretation of the way that, that legislation was initially filed was that it would be a dollar in, and a dollar out, and it's being interpreted in different ways. You know, the other 3.25% that's left over, you know, whether it's part of the coalition, I think it's called the Forward Coalition, I read it in the paper, I think I read it in the Cape Cod Times. Anyway, they were talking about money supporting housing, they were talking about money supporting broadband, supporting tourism. That will be a council vote, I assume, in terms of how that, that other 3% would be divided, or am I missing something?
Yes, actually, the, it's, the 6% is the local excise tax, and that's 6%. The 2.75% is an additional amount. That's going to, that 2.75% goes to the water, Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. It's the 6% local excise tax that we're talking about with this coalition that's created. There, that, so that's the pool of funds that would, we can do, we have flexibility as to what we want to do with it. We can, we can make that decision here locally. You don't have to model what you want to do after what this coalition is proposing. You can, we can, we can make our own decision as to how to deal with that.
Thank you. I am not going to let you off because I think we've got to go up the ladder one more time. The numbers are staggering here. So I understand what everybody is trying to get clear, and we're also trying to portray it clearly to others who are listening. And what we've done successfully, and we are, we found out from the selectmen and, and counselors meeting, that we are one of the only ones to have designated in the past the room and meals tax to the split that you're talking about, general fund and then the fund for comprehensive wastewater, private fund. That was what we did with other money. Now they're going to give us another 6%, and then there's another 2.75% that's generated from our town that goes to a different pile. That pile is the wastewater that we're arguing over. If we give them a dollar, since we haven't finished all of our wastewater work, we want the dollar back. I'm, I'm a very generous guy, I believe. My wife calls me generous Jim every once in a while. And I'm ready to give other people the money, but not until I know that Barnstable is taken care of and Barnstable problems have been taken care of. We have had sewer abatement issues that people have come up here and literally cried because we are going to tax them and put it against their real estate. So until you really see that, you guys don't know what a tough decision really is. It has to be the toughest thing that I've experienced on the dais. So that's coming our way, so we need to fight for every dime of the 2.75 so that it comes back, so that our own, our own Barnstable residents don't have to endure the cost for trying to make it up because they took it and spread it like Jiffy spread all over our district. So that's the first part. Then, we were in good standing. Also, we found out from the selectmen and counselors that because we're at the 6%, and not everybody was, that we don't have to adjust our percentage unless we want to adjust it downward. So we will have a matched 6%. So that's the good news. We don't seem to be having to challenge the percentages as one of our jobs that we have to complete between now and the end of May, probably, to have it set up for the July 1st. When would you like these reserves set up?
We, we, again, we have, we have time to do that because they're not going to let us use any estimate for fiscal year 20.
Right, it's going right into a reserve for a whole year, and nobody touches it.
Whatever we collect in fiscal year 20 is going to fall to our general fund free cash.
Okay. So again, let's be clear, that's not a time-sensitive issue for us, but it's an issue we need to resolve. And right now, it would fall the same exact split that the original sixes falling, which is the 2 and 4. So we have rights to think about that portion differently than perhaps the 2 and 4 as well. So those are the issues we're going to be facing as we go forward, and they fall in three different categories. The good news is the sixes are there, we don't have to concern ourselves with percentages, we just have to concern ourselves with where we put the money and what we assign it to. And I have to tell you, I was very proud of the way Paul ran the meeting with the selectmen and county, and I was very proud of this council in that they voted to properly set aside the money when there wasn't another town that hadn't. So kudos to the council for that work. Thank you very much, Mark. We'll be working with you in the future, I'm sure. Town manager, any questions on the first part of the town manager's report? Yes, Counsel Cullen?
You mentioned the job fair, but you neglected to say the date. Is it the same as the?
6th, I'm sorry, March 6th. I apologize.
And the location is?
It's at the Youth and Community Center, Hyannis Youth and Community Center. From Barnstable High School, we're going to have transportation. I spoke with the RTA today, and they've reached out to Patty Machado to try to see if we can help out any of our youth that aren't at the high school but want to go as well. So we're going to do all we can that, to, to make transportation a non-issue for our, our young community out there.
And can I ask what the hours are of that?
2:30 to 5:00.
Did you say that? I'm sorry. 2:30 to 5:00.
Yeah, March 6th, 2:30 to 5:00 at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't say that before.
Follow-up on the side? Counselor Beedenbender?
Thank you, President Crocker. May I just make a comment related to the, the short-term rental? Just some thoughts. You know, I'm, I'm really concerned about this for, for a number of reasons. One is that in the back of my mind is the RAC report that said we had $400 million worth of infrastructure that we had to put in over the next 60 years if we, we ran it out. No amount of short-term rental tax is going to end up paying that. So I, I'm, I'm, I just, I am really concerned about losing any of that money. And I know it's a, I, proponents for this, you know, some of the pushback, you know, comments are in regards to this is a regional situation, so we all need to get in there together and, and look at it from a regional perspective. And I do not disagree with that. However, anything we do in Barnstable helps that regional situation. If we don't do it, it impacts the region. If we do do it, it impacts the region. So I, I, that argument doesn't really work for me. And then I think about the folks who are the ones who have the rentals that I, you know, I, I haven't heard too many that are in favor of it. You know, they're, they're, they're now, you know, granted, it's paid by the renters, but they're seeing additional taxes coming out of, of their rentals. And I, you know, I think about answering to the constituents, saying that, wait a minute, I'm paying all these taxes, and now it's going over there? So that's another thing that I think we have to keep in mind in all of this, you know. So just some thoughts. Thanks.
Another reason to fight for the 2.75 as it's distributed. And Mark is, was the first one to lead the charge, and your counselors, leadership has also.
If I might as well, another reason to move quickly on having a formal representative on this board.
Yes. Anybody else? Yes. Vice President?
Just a quick question, Mark. Relative to the Cape Cod Blue Economy Foundation, is that a foundation within the chamber or is that a separate entity? Do you know?
I, I will get you that answer. I do, I do not know the answer to that. Yes, I will.
But the town is the fiscal agent for the grant?
The chamber.
Oh, the chamber?
We partnered with them.
The chamber is the fiscal agent?
Yes, for the region.
So that million dollars goes to the chamber and with?
I believe, I believe it's a coordinated effort.
Okay. So the million dollars goes to the chamber, and then is shared with the town, and then shared with the, this Cape Cod Blue Economy Foundation?
I believe so, yes. I will get you the details on how it will be administered and what the Blue Economy Foundation is. I'm not sure if anybody here has that specific answer. Oh, good. Elizabeth.
Oh, good.
Good evening. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. The Blue Economy started as part of the Cape Cod Chamber, originally supported by the Seaport Economic Council, and they have such, they have since spin-off, spun off into their own organization, the Blue Economy Foundation. So again, the Seaport Economic Development Council, sort of as a continuum of this work that's happened for many years, gave this very generous grant to that group. The town will ask, will act as the fiscal agent for this grant, but we're essentially a pass-through. They will be doing sort of the planning and implementation of these projects, and we stand as their partner.
So in other words, the Cape Cod Blue Economy Foundation is a separate 501(c)(3) foundation within the chamber?
That is my understanding. I, I will get back to you with a more specific answer, but yes, I believe they are separate, they're a separate entity from the chamber. Yes, we all, we all say yes.
Okay. I, I had not heard of this foundation.
Yeah, and again, they're, they're very closely affiliated with the Cape Cod Chamber because it was sort of an outgrowth of that additional, of that original effort that happened there. But to be able to fundraise, applies, apply for grants, do things in sort of a different capacity, they established this separate foundation.
No, I'm just saying for the sake of transparency, it is technically then really an arm of the, of the chamber, if it's the foundation within the chamber.
Obsidary of the chamber.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get to. Thank you.
The town, the town does not appoint anybody to it, so. Thank you, ladies. Back over here, excuse me one moment, we might need some feedback. Yes, Counsel Snep?
Mr. President, Mark, could you tell us how many towns have appointed a formal representative to the Water Protection Fund?
As of our first meeting, mid, mid-month, I believe, one at this point, to my knowledge. But, but since then, others may have.
Was there an April 1st date that was important for us?
What I had pushed to hold a meeting, whether the...
Was there an April 1st date that was important for us?
What, I had pushed to hold a meeting whether the, the, the discussion of the parties that were, were at the meeting in Boston said that obviously we, we need to begin discussions on how this will be administered. There were a lot of questions. They were going to push off another meeting until all the towns appointed somebody. And I suggested that we not do that and that we hold a meeting in April and we start to hold them regularly and as formal members come, because there will be these issues that we are all discussing. And I don't want the one appointed or two appointed board members with the state and others to be meeting and talking about this without formal or informal representation. So, I just said, well, I can't speak for the town council, but I am available until such time as the town council decides on who the official member would be and I suggest that we meet again in April. And everybody seemed to say, yeah, that makes good sense. So, I think we're going to have another meeting in April.
Maybe I could shed some light on it also. I received a letter as the town council president by the Cape Cod Commission who was, I guess, the administrator of, in some way or another, of the whole process, asking us to have an appointment by the 1st of April. So, that is something we will be bringing forward shortly.
Thank you. I was unaware of that.
Yes, Councilor Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, to be perfectly blunt, we, we, we need to, I don't know what the process is going to be to select this representative. But I have heard that you made quite the impression in Boston and they're looking for a strong leader on that and, on that board. And Barnstable is already considered kind of strong leadership. And so, Mr. President, I, I want to ask that we move very, very quickly in making the decision. I think we have a few choices. We have, we are blessed with an extremely good team, finance, DPW, knowledgeable people and people who can speak very well, not, not the least of which is represented through our town manager. So, I'm, I'm hoping that we can facilitate this and so that we get very comfortable with our leadership as soon as possible. Thank you.
We won't have a problem picking a leader, that won't be a problem. What we need is clarity on some of the demands of the job so that then we can make sure we have that discussion as a board of 13. We open the nominations for who we think is appropriate once we have a clear understanding. But they're a little behind being completely organized to my little level of satisfaction right at this point. But we, they are gaining and we are getting close, but I have no doubt we'll make the timeframe.
If I might, I, and I've made this recommendation, I know, to our leadership, but, but for the council as a whole, it's your town manager's opinion that certainly this is, would be a three-year appointment and that the first three years should be represented either by a town council member or your town manager. Beyond that, I believe certainly we have tremendous depth in our staff. But the types of decisions and the formation of a board with this level of authority merits that sort of level of individual. So, that would be my recommendation to you and whatever you decide, I will be supportive of and provide whatever team you need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Finally, in an effort to keep the town council updated on our progress on our comprehensive water management plan, I intend to provide updates, the second meeting of every month until we've completed the plan to our town council. I've also established an internal working group of the town manager, assistant town manager, director of public works and assistant director of public works, not limiting it to that, but always consisting of those four. I've also asked our town council leadership, both president and vice president, through the president, to, to make that same commitment and they have. So, the six of those individuals will meet as needed, weekly if necessary, as we move through the next nine months of preparing the comprehensive water management plan. This in no way circumvents communications with all council, but we're going to need to have active communication. Number one issue right now before us, our finance director will certainly be active at the table, helping us formulate a financial plan relevant to all that we will be bringing forward in the next nine months. Without that sort of active working group, it's going to be difficult to answer the questions necessary to deliver an effective plan. I expect that it'll be broadened to the council much of the time, the public much of the time. So, this is going to be an intensive effort, but I, I felt that without that level of commitment, it's going to be difficult to deliver. So, I just wanted to let you know that I've, I've asked that and certainly our leadership has concurred with, with that thought and we will proceed that way. As far as an update, you've already seen this schedule. Director Santos did a, did an excellent job in providing an update. I just want to show you that we're, we're on track, we're still moving, we're shooting for fall of this year to have a completed draft comprehensive water management plan. It'll go into MIPA and the Cape Cod Commission, you know, for review and ultimately a determination issued at the end of that process. I wanted to step back for one minute and I know you're having a busy agenda tonight, so I'll move through these slides quickly. I've given you copies of them and I'm always available to sit down even individually and talk through this. But there, there's been a lot of questions by our counselors about what, the rate at which we're moving forward with many of these efforts and without a comprehensive water management plan, you know, is this the best way to move on this? And I, I know that they would feel more comfortable once the next plan is in place and approved. We will as well. But again, I want to step back because it's not just council, it's the public and it's the many people who have been interacting for many years with us that, that have asked and when I talked through this with them, not only do they feel more comfortable, but they remember, you know, what we've done for the last 30 years. So, I'll jump back, not, not to the beginning of time certainly, but 1990s. And I looked back at what we were doing with our last plan and in the package that I've provided you, there is a plan, there is an approved plan. It was approved in 2007. It is still the valid plan. So, we aren't without a plan. When we go in for SRF funds, we get SRF funds. Whether we can get 0%, but that was also a decision of our town council that they didn't want to move forward at the time with a growth-neutral policy. So, that's really what triggered us not being eligible for the 0%. We will revisit that as we move through this. Also, DEP's definition of that has changed, so it's very interesting as we get into those financial discussions, it may be looked at very differently. But back then, when we were doing the, the current plan that's in place, develop a better understanding of how the town's wastewater disposal interacts with its natural resources, develop a plan for providing wastewater facilities in an effort to resolve existing problems including failed Title V systems, impact on drinking water supply, protection of natural resources and accommodating residential and commercial growth. So, many of the goals are exactly the same as what they are today. We've just refined them more. We've actually broadened them slightly and we received that approval in 2007. That determination is in your package. I, I jump ahead, you've seen this many times and this will be the last slide I'll show you as well. The, the brown areas are our water supplies, our zone twos to our public water supplies. The blue or the darker lines are the five major coastal recharge areas that we have in our community. This is the existing sewer area in town, primarily in Hyannis, a little bit in Barnstable Village. So, it, it is limited in the area that it serves. The original plan that's on the books and approved right now included a recommendation to proceed with searing in the yellow area and different approaches to some of those concerns we had about drinking water and about onsite Title V system failures across the rest of the town. And I'll point out with this map, this is actually the map that's in the plan. You can see, and it was, it's interesting that back when, back in through, through the late 80s into the 90s, we, meaning myself, Lindsey Council, Dale Saad, Tom Cambrieri from the commission, were, actually had a more basic nutrient loading model and we were running the numbers on all five of those embayments, coming up with the same exact answers, though probably not specific, but, but they haven't deviated substantially. Southside has a major nutrient loading concern, but at the time, DEP wouldn't recognize that. They wouldn't recognize that modeling. So, in a little bit of a effort to make our point, you can see we put the shaded area over three bays and said, hey, we should be addressing nutrient loading in this, but you're saying we're not ready for that because at that time, we were trying to create like a standardized modeling approach and some sort of sampling, like a sentinel station so that we could determine the TMDLs in all of these embayments. And so, it just wasn't ready. And this will be important when I get to the end. So, but, but this was approved and these areas were, were identified as the areas that we would be moving forward with searing on. And if you remember, we moved forward with Will Quocket Lake area and Stewart's Creek area, both identified in this plan. We actually had a, a phasing plan to move forward with searing over the 20-year period, approved by the state for us to proceed. I take the work of the RAC and I overlay what was approved in our determination that I've given you. And you can see that much of the crosshatched black area was the approved sewer expansion and the work of our RAC identified those areas really as potential future sewer areas. So, you can see when we bring information to our council and recommend that we proceed with some of these projects, they are within our approved plan. So, when I'm asked those questions, I don't mean to give short answers when I say that we can proceed with this and it will be eligible for funding. It is in the approved plan. But now what we're going to do is add that next layer, that nutrient loading layer, okay? And that's what you're going to see in our updating of this comprehensive, and we call it comprehensive water management planning. But we were actually one of the first in the state to do that under the old title of wastewater management planning. When you look at the specific projects that you've approved, the attics, the Finney's Lane, the Long Pond area, the sewer line running down to Colville's Beach, you can see those all fall in, those approved areas. Now, some of them, South of Long Pond, we've said there's even more that we need to do. And by the time we get to that construction, we'll have our comprehensive water management plan done and this will be in it. So, when we come forward with confidence and make these requests, this is why. When I come back to this and I, the other thing that I've said to you numerous times is this plan is always evolving and we have never stopped doing work. Even when we're not expanding sewer, we're upgrading our treatment facility and our ability to remove nutrients and are looking at removing emerging contaminants. So, jump ahead. As soon as we're done with this one, hopefully this year or early next year, I guarantee you, the whole focus is going to shift to emerging contaminants and these brown areas that you see on that plan and us updating this again and having these same discussions as we begin to work with the state to figure out, well, what are you going to require us to do within our zones of contribution to public water supply, not relevant to nutrient loading, but relevant to emerging contaminants? And after that, there'll be something else. So, this never ends. I think you ask excellent questions, but I wanted to take the time to say it isn't random what we're coming forward to you with. It is, it is based on fact and as each of these layers gets added, it just gets more complicated for us to figure out how we're going to manage it. It's nice to have non-traditional options though now in the mix. We didn't have that in 2007. So, I wanted to share that with you. We're progressing the second meeting. Every month until we're done, I will give you updates. Thank you.
Any additional questions under town manager communication? Yes, Mr. Vice President?
Just a quick question. Mark, you know, having served on the RAC committee, when we put that plan collectively together, we really weren't looking at some groundwater, groundwater-related issues like PFOS. If in fact, as you mentioned to us a while back, the state through its own DEP is considering lowering that standard come June 1st, if that happens, do we have a plan in place above and beyond what we've discussed already to deal with that? Because that's a, that's a problem that keeps me up at night sometimes to think that if it goes down, you know, a couple of more percentage points, then it's a critical issue.
The challenge that we have, yes, we, we are working now with the existing systems that we have to understand if it drops from 0.07 to 0.02, how we can manage it through our systems. The challenge that we have is that the, the, the Hyannis system right now is being blended with water from Yarmouth and that's an unknown. Because if that is above 0.02, then we're going to have a different challenge.
That was my next question. If, if in fact the water we're blending at the Mary Dunn Wells, if that does, if it, if it is above the 0.02, then that's the entire water supply for Hyannis, Hyannis Port, West Hyannis and you have summer approaching and there's Taurus and I mean, it's a...
It would be, it would be a challenge. Typically, when EPA adopts drinking water standards, they give three years for compliance. We are confident that we can bring forward solutions within that time. If they immediately put this upon the state of Massachusetts and us, that will be a different challenge.
I'm sure we'll be ready for it.
Yes, sir. We're, we're preparing.
The remedy, we, we have, he's, you're absolutely right, we're on top of that. We've already discussed what the remedy is and the remedy is usually the purchase of a filter system. And you can bet, it's going to be like batteries with a hurricane. There's gone, there's going to be a run on these filters. So, we are talking about understanding when the legislation comes out, preparing the appropriate articles so that we can perhaps purchase and be ready for it. We cannot go into the summer season with this kind of a threat, obviously. So, leadership is on top of that and we're grateful to Mark for his leadership. Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Rob Kersedy?
Not a question, just a comment and to say thank you, Mark, for keeping this in front of us because it's our number one issue as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Councilor Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. Furthering my comments on how great our staff is, I do want to point out, and I was going to say this during council reports, but the New England Water Environmental Association at the annual conference did give an award to Robert Delgado, Chief Operator and Deputy Division Supervisor of the Town of Barnstable Water Pollution Control Division. And Robert has shown a high interest in performance in wastewater operations. He's only been with us, I think, less than two years and so he's been recognized for his work, but that's the kind of people that we have working in this town, so thank you very much.
We're also quite happy to tell you that he has quite a stellar service before he got here, so we're very fortunate to get an employee like that. Absolutely. Thank you. Any further questions of our manager? Hearing none, I'm on to acting on the minutes of the day. I'd ask the Vice President to handle the minutes of February 7th, please.
Yes, I would like to present for approval the minutes of February 7th, 2019, town council meeting.
Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor of the minutes of February 7th, 2019 as drafted, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? And Janet, please record that we are missing Council Cullen at this point. Thank you. I'm looking for communications. I'll start on this end. Yes. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give Deb the opportunity there. The, there's a construction project taking place in Marston's Mills on Route 149 and I just want to let people know that those businesses are open for business and if you haven't frequented them before, they are definitely worth visiting. The, the cash market, the, obviously there's gas station there, Sweet Repeats, Marston The cash market, the, obviously, this gas station there, Sweet Repeats, Marston's Mills Restaurant, the Mills Restaurant, great place to go, and if you've never been, now is a great opportunity to help them. Maybe, I just wanted to take this opportunity to give them, you know, maybe they are going to use, lose regular customers, but maybe this will be an opportunity for them to get new customers. Also want to remember the Salon at the Mills, the Plum Porch, fantastic gift store, and also Morning Glory Cafe. Unfortunately, the owner had to close business three times this week, because they were digging right in front of his driveway. And again, these are year-round businesses, these aren't places that have high traffic, like some other places here in Cape Cod, and, or I should say, in our town. And they need to be open and get business year-round. So if you can get down there and help Josh at Morning Glory Cafe, or even, he does catering as well, you can call and get sandwiches and different things like that. This is a shameless plug for my precinct, so thank you very much.
Going this way, yes, Counselor Cullum.
Yes, that's interesting. I was also going to comment on the construction on C Street, which seems to be endless, but will be beautiful in the end, so we have to hang tight. Because I remember that very same thing happening to me when I owned the market, where they were replacing the 100-year-old pipes, and at one point, they had blocked the road here and blocked the road there, and no one could get to the store. And it was like three days long, it was terrible. And it's really frustrating, so I'll go to Marston's Mills. But one thing I wanted to mention was that I had, I had a phone call from a constituent the other day that concerned me about the funding for C Street, and I just wanted to make it clear that that's Chapter 90 money, it's not general fund money, and that that project has been planned and worked on. I mean, I worked on that project before I became a town counselor, so it's been in the pipeline a long time. And the people on C Street really deserve it, and I'm really looking forward to it. It's going to be beautiful, and they've waited a long time for their property values to increase. So I just wanted to say, please wait, don't, you know, for the, for the final product, and please be patient, and let's all just be thankful that we're at this point, and we're going to tie it up soon. Thank you.
I might point out, too, that that project shuts down for the season and then has to reignite again, so obviously, it's a major overhaul of the area. Well, well done fighting for the funds for that end of town. Counselors on my side? Counselors up the pike, yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo Counselor Levesque's comment that this is, project in Marston's Mills has again been long sought after. The businesses are excited for the end product, but they really do need our support during this period of time. But I also wanted to commend town staff for doing the best that they can to communicate with our businesses and our community. Our police department, who has to navigate when they have to close the roads, but also communicate to those traveling through that, yes, these businesses are open, are doing their job. So I just want to do a shout-out to them, that everyone's doing the best that they can, and I know where I'm getting coffee tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have been in both the muffin shop and, and the breakfast place, and they're terrific. You're absolutely right. Thank you, I wish them well. Any other counselors on the sun? Hearing none? Orders, orders of the day. We're going to do the one that did not make it last time, so we will be jumping into What I would like to say about 219-042 is that it was originally introduced on 11-118, that it did come out of committee, that it did head over to Zoning Board of Appeals, that it has come back here for our work, and that it did take a second seat to the actual discussion of the zone and what is the proper uses in the zone. With that said, I had personally had property identified within one of the maps, and so I immediately contacted the Ethics Committee, had great discussions with them, had great discussions with our own attorney. She's very prudent in the way she approaches these issues. And I did sit out both the committee vote and the vote that sent it to the Planning Board. Since then, it's come back, it's had some discussion around it, surrounding me being one of the 1,700 that we sent notices to that are either abutters or owners within the zone. And I since told the crowd, and am here again tonight to tell you, that I've asked that my properties be removed. So make no mistake about it, that's what I want. So with that in mind, I intend to leave the dais now, because I've been told if I am, even if my properties are not covered by it, if I am within 300 feet, that I'm not to vote on it. So the zone that is all about me, or as some would like to think it's all about me, I first want to be on the record that I'm asking for my properties to be removed, and secondly, I would be an abut then, so I still cannot sit on that particular map. With that said, I would turn it over to more than capable Vice President John Flores to take over.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. And before we move forward, I'll wait for you to exit, so there's absolutely no conflict. And regarding this article, I'm going to choose to exercise my own right to debate it. Therefore, in accordance with Town Council Rules of February 06, there's rule number four. I'm going to designate a presiding chair just for Article 2019-042. And the way this is done is in precinct order, I representing precinct one, it will go to the next subsequent member of the council representing precinct two. So I'm going to ask Eric Steinheil, the past president, to preside over only 2019-042, so that I can exercise my right to debate and give opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselor Levesque, could you please read item 2019-042, please?
Thank you. This is old business, it's a roll call vote. This is item number 2019-042, amending Chapter 240, Article 3 of the zoning ordinances to expand the Highway Business District as written.
I have a second. Vice President Flores?
I'd like to move to amend item number 2019-042 to divide the item into three separate items, based on the three maps that have been distributed, so that there is no confusion and we're clear. This is item 2019-042A, Section 1, by amending Article 2, Section 6. The zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts is hereby amended by expanding the Highway Business HB districts as shown on the maps entitled, Proposed Amendment to the Town Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis; Proposed Amendment to the Centerville Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis; and the Proposed Amendment to the Osterfield Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis, all dated October 26, 2018, as prepared by the Town of Barnstable GIS unit, and to include only the following parcels: Map 189, Parcels 002-001, 003, 067, 058, 057, and 055. In addition, Map 209, Parcels 086, CND, 085, 084, 083, 082, 081, 015, 016, 017, 018, 019, 020, and inclusive of always shown on those maps. Section 2, the Chapter 240, Article 3, Section 240-26, Highway Office of the Zoning Ordinance is hereby deleted. In Section 3, Chapter 40, Article 2, Section 240-5, Establishment of Districts of the Zoning Ordinances is hereby amended by striking the Office District section and associated Highway Office District. 2019-042B, by amending Section 1 to read, by amending Article 2, Section 6, the zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts is hereby amended by expanding the Highway Business District as shown on the maps entitled, Proposed Amendments to the Town Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis; Proposed Amendment to the Centerville Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis; Proposed Amendment to the Hyannis Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis, all dated October 26, 2018, as prepared by the Town of Barnstable GIS unit, and to include only the following parcels: Map 229, Parcel 101; Map 250, Parcels 049 and 009; Map 249, Parcels 063, 053-001, 053, 054, CND; 055, CND; Map 250, Parcels 007, 006, CND; 005, 004, 002, CND; 001, 029, 028. On Map 249, Parcels 088, 105, 028, 029, and inclusive of always shown. And finally, 2019-042C, by amending Section 1 to read, by amending Article 2, Section 6, the zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts is hereby amended by expanding the Highway Business District as shown on the maps entitled, Proposed Amendments to the Town Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis; Proposed Amendment to the Hyannis Zoning Map, Expanding the Highway Business District in Centerville and Hyannis, all dated October 26, 2018, as prepared by the Town of Barnstable GIS unit, and to include only the following parcels: Map 290, Parcels 112 and 100; Map 289, Parcels 046 and 045, and inclusive of always shown.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Point of information, we were not handed any of this amendment, other than the, the map parcel numbers. None of the other language was given to us. So I'm, I'm not sure where...
I was just going to explain what that amendment was, based on this.
Okay. I'd like to see it in writing myself, but...
Okay. I'll ask the town attorney if you could prepare copies of that. Okay. So what this amendment is doing, you all have, everyone has this in their folder?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's dividing, the proposed motion is to divide 042 into three items, three separate items. So you have Item A, which consists of the first two maps in your packet, Item B, and So we have copies of the actual language, but all it's doing is dividing 042...
Into three.
Into three separate items.
So just to be clear, nothing has changed, other than that?
Correct.
We're taking these three maps that we've been talking about, separating them out, haven't changed anything with, anything other than, we're just discussing them each independent of one another?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So I do have a second on that motion from the Vice President. Is there any further discussion on that?
I think the, given to one of the counselors?
Yep. I'll ask the town attorney, can we get copies of, it's being made, okay, copies are being made. But I just explained exactly what the proposed motion does in the other packet. So we're waiting for the copies, is there any other discussion on, on this? Any other questions? Vice President Flores?
As Presiding Officer, Eric Steinheil suggested, all, what I just read basically took the whole, the map as a whole, and divided it into the three maps that we have been discussing and debating. It has not debated or discussed any of the parcels that people might have an interest in. It's just that we're looking at the map as a whole, as Section A, Section B, Section C, which are the maps that the public has received, and we did it that way for clarity, so that it would be, although it might sound confusing, it's actually clarifying the situation, so that everybody has the original information that we began to discuss a while back. It's basically allowing us to divide it into the three separate maps for debate and discussion tonight.
Just trying to take smaller bites of a bigger apple into separate items.
Point of information?
Yep.
Do we have these maps, so, up on the screen, so people at home can see? That would probably be, I don't know if that's even possible, but just...
Yep.
You do, oh, great, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we will. When we get to, we still have to vote on the motion to separate, divide these into three items.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the ref...
Yes, Counselor Snap.
The references were to maps dated in October, and the maps that we have in front of us are dated February 6. The ordinance refers to four maps, and now we're talking about three maps. I think...
No, you, there's two parts in one map. There's two, there's two maps in one item. Item A in your packet, and then you have Item B and Item C. That's the proposed motion, to divide 042 into those three items. Item A, which has two maps, Item B has one map, and Item C has one map. And this is based on the actual town zoning maps, not illustrative maps. These are the actual, refers back to, that's why you have to read each map and parcel when you, when you have a proposed motion, because it's very specific to the town village zoning maps.
A lot to comprehend.
It's a lot, it's a lot of verbiage, but it's, has, just has to be read that way. So we're very specific on map and parcel. We're not changing anything, we haven't decided on anything, we're just separating into three parts, and the proposal is to take up these three items separately, and then we can go through, if anyone has any amendments on map and parcels on each item. Counselor Hebert?
Thank you. Are we, Elizabeth, are we going to be able to put the maps on the...
We will, but we have a motion on the floor we have to vote on first, if we're going to divide this into three parts, three items.
Thank you.
Do you need someone moved at this point?
Someone to move the question?
Move it. Let's move it.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the question on the motion proposed by the Vice President? Yeah, I do, I raise hands, the new president does aye. All right, let's do it over. You want to do it the new way? Everyone comfortable with the new way? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the motion passes to divide these into...
To move the question.
I'm sorry, to move the question. So now, we are going to vote on the motion to divide Item 219-042 into three separate items. It would be 219-042A, 219-042B, and 219-042C. All those in favor of this motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? I think the ayes have it. So the motion passes, so this will divide into three items. At this point, I'd like to just take a five-minute recess to kind of digest these maps, and then we'll reconvene. Okay. So we're back from our brief recess. All the councilors have copies of the maps, I think that they're available on the, on the floor as well. So the, I just wanted to reference again, this packet, councilors, this packet that's in your folder, this is a template also, so if you want to make amendments, you can, just, the paragraph's all there, and the map and parcel that you want to make any type of proposed amendment to strike. And again, Item A has two maps, and that's because of how the zoning, the actual zoning maps in the villages are. Everyone clear on how to make amendments? Yes, okay. All right, so let's take up Item 2019-042A first. Councilor Levesque?
I would like to make a motion that we remove the West Parcel, Crocker Parcel, under Map, Section 1 of 2019-042A. I move to amend the town zoning map, the Centerville zoning map, and the Osterville zoning map referenced in Section 1 of the order by striking from those maps the parcel identified as Map 189 Parcel 003, addressed as 1949 Falmouth Road, Route 28, Centerville.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Discussion on this motion? Do I have a motion to move?
Move the question.
All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, question is moved. So the motion as put forward by Councilor Levesque, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
Two abstentions, sorry. Clerk has that recorded, so that motion does pass, so that will remove that parcel. Councilor Levesque?
This is the East Parcel on Finney's Lane, Crocker Parcel, under Section 1 of 2019-042A. I move to amend the town zoning map, the Centerville zoning map referenced in Section 1 of the order by striking from those maps the portions of the parcel identified as Map 209 Parcel 020, that are currently zoned RD-1 and RC.
I have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Councilor, Councilor Hebert?
Thank you. So, and we're removing these because of Councilor Crocker's feeling that they've become a hindrance to us moving this project forward, is that correct?
He's requested that they be removed, yes.
Okay. So I, this is my problem with this, is that I understand his rationale, but I do want to make a point of this. Everybody sitting on this dais is here because we care about the Town of Barnstable. Everybody on this dais is in themselves leaders, and people with a vision for our town and our community. So I take an issue with the feeling that any counselor who inadvertently finds themselves in this kind of a position, and he did all the right things, so I'm not objecting to his taking these off, but he went through the Ethics Committee, he made sure that he had done all the right things, and, so I'm concerned about a precedent going into the future. You ask people to come and serve on these committees, and to be on the council, and to work hard and diligently for the benefits of the town. If, so, I just want to make a statement, that I think that we have to be very careful about when we kind of slap the hand of people who are trying their very best to make this the best town it can. So my vote on this is simply a symbolic vote to say, I think the public needs to be very careful before they accuse any of the fine people on this council to, doing self-serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Councilor Neary?
Thank you, Mr., Councilor Steinheil, for now. I concur with, with Councilor Hebert. One of the tenets, I think, of this whole process was to, additionally, to try to look at the way zoning works in the town, and try to consolidate specific pieces on this map that fall under multiple zoning specifications. This particular lot falls under three, and I think, again, part of the process was to try to streamline this, this, this whole thing. With that in mind, if it went to a vote, I would vote to approve this particular parcel for that, considering it exists under three separate zoning classifications. That's the point. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Cullum?
Well, I disagree. I think that it shows, I have a lot of pride for our president for, for, for taking his parcel out and understanding that it's a bad optic for the town, and it makes the town council look like there's a little bit of inside baseball going on. I think it was a really prudent thing to do, and I'm thankful that he did it, because now there's some hope for this zoning amendment, in my opinion, where if he hadn't done that and hadn't been open and honest, to the point of spelling it out, letter by letter, to the people, because you have to remember that, you know, we talk up here, they're the boss. They need to understand what's going on up here. So, you know, I, I think it was the appropriate thing to do, and I'm thankfully did it, because now it has a chance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Levesque? Do you want, want to withdraw that, or? Councilor Rep. Settey? Okay. I have a motion to move the question?
Aye.
I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? To oppose, any abstentions? Councilor Levesque and Councilor Hebert? Any abstentions? Right, to move the question, right. All right, so the question is moved, so this is the motion to, to remove Map, Map 209 Parcel 020, as proposed by Councilor Levesque. All those in favor of this motion, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Let's do, let's do, you got three? Any abstentions? That motion does pass. All right. So we're still on Item 2019-042A, minus those two parcels. Are there any other discussion on this item? Councilor Beanbender?
Just point of information, this is now opening up the discussion for this map, the entire map, okay. I have...
Map, only on Item A.
Yes, only on Item A.
Yep, that does consist of two maps.
Correct, yep. So I have a lot of, a lot of things I'd like to just discuss here. I, I understand, in theory, what this committee was trying to put forth, and I, but I do want to say something to the process, that, that there were two pieces to this, one was the as-by-right uses, and then there was the map. The as-by-right uses, that was, that was an ongoing discussion for several months, and I was privy to probably five or six of those meetings. And, and that portion of the process took a great deal of time, a lot of thoughtful discussion, a lot of back and forth, compromises were made, and that's where we got to that, that proposed list of approved uses, which went from approximately five to now, I think it's 27 or 29. The map, however, came in front of the committee the last day, or the last meeting, prior to when it was presented at Town Council. There was a very speedy discussion, there wasn't any background or context provided as to why these maps were decided the way, the way they were, why they should be considered. There was no rationale as to how this was going to improve economic development, how it was, how we were going to mitigate traffic, or how we were going to, to entice businesses, or what the impacts were on residential communities. So, I have, I, I do have a fundamental problem with making a big decision like this that has very little to substantiate why it showed up in front of us to begin with. Now, that said, I have a number of sort of observations about it. So, traffic, traffic is a concern. You know, if, so, let's say the maps all get approved, let's say if they were to get approved, you will have increased traffic, and, and there are a number of traffic studies that are out there, and, and I will tell you, you know, for example, the, the, the map here on A, to the west of Beechwood Cemetery, so that's where you see the two half-circles, which are the residences, right, and it goes all the way down to the Masonic Lodge. The annual daily traffic there, during the regular time of year, so, you know, this time of year, for example, is almost 24,000, right? In the summer, it goes to just a little over 31,000. Then if you go to the actual intersection of, or each, the Old Stage and 28, you're up at around 33,000. Accidents there, in 2018, there were, in that section, about 69. 2017, about 80, and so you get the idea. So we have a high accident area, we have very high traffic in that area, it's very narrow. So I'm concerned about traffic on this map and all of the other maps. Infrastructure, there's no, we, we haven't had a discussion about if we're going to expand this map, what's the infrastructure that we have in place, and, and how are we going to prioritize infrastructure? So, you know, we don't have sewer in this section yet, and, and I, I don't, you know, I hear about new growth dollars, and I, I've heard that, well, you know, if you open it up to businesses, they will come and they will pay for the sewers. I have a really hard time believing that. I mean, you're looking at relatively small parcels, I mean, if you look at, look at the map, west of, of Beechwood, that, that sort of sliver there, those are not huge parcels. The parcels that are available for development, they're, they're like, they're half an acre, one and a half acres, you know, the folks that are developing those lots are not putting millions of dollars into, into wastewater treatment, or, you know, pipes. Then, the other part that I really struggle with is the local comprehensive plan. So if you go to the local comprehensive plan, so this is the general portion of the plan, it has a reference to Route 28 in Hyannis, Centerville HB districts, and I'm just, I'm just taking one section of this paragraph. Full development of these districts may exacerbate existing traffic management and community character issues. Then, there's another section, sorry, it's hard to get to the pages, that is a general reference to commercial and industrial development, and it says, "The town must look for ways to direct some of the growth potential away from the villages and highway corridors where infrastructure is not available or growth is not welcomed, and into the downtown Hyannis area where infrastructure can be provided efficiently and economically." And then there's a piece that, well, no, that's the next map, sorry, so I won't go there. So essentially, you know, and there was a comment made, Felicia Penn made a comment about the preservation of neighborhoods, which is also mentioned in the local comprehensive plan. So, all of that, from the local comprehensive plan that was done, and we've all agreed that it's time to revisit it, it's from 2010, but the, the, the current plan that's in place does not support this expansion or this development, and, and I, if, if we do these kinds of things, then I wonder, why do we even put together a local comprehensive plan? So if we are going to start expanding our, you know, our, our economic, what we perceive to be economic opportunities in these areas, I want the local comprehensive plan to support it, and I want the larger strategic plan for the town to support it. So, so there are some sort of fundamental foundation pieces that, that are, that are missing for me. And then, in addition, with, with A, you know, one of the problems I have on this map, and I have it with the other maps too, is the impact on residential neighborhoods. There are, there are portions of the map, you know, on this map and other parts of the map that we'll discuss in a bit, that, that I can, I can understand, or, you know, I can see the sort of wisdom of, of sort of firming up the, the zoning for sections of it, but not where it impacts residential neighborhoods. I, I just think we have to do a lot more due diligence and ex... I just think we have to do a lot more due diligence and exploration of those areas and the impacts on those areas before we start changing zoning. And I really do think that it is the job of our planning and growth department to help guide us as to what is the sensible place to do these things, based on the studies that we already have in place, or economic studies that we want to do of a region for what it looks like to build out. So I just have a lot of fundamental issues with this. So on map A, for example, not to totally throw the baby out with the bathwater, on map A, I'm fine with taking the HO portions of this map and making them HB. They essentially function as HB anyway, with the businesses that are there. That makes sense to me. But I do not support the inclusion of the map west of Beechwood Cemetery. So I would, you know, I can make the...would you like me to make, suggest an amendment now, or at your pleasure?
You can't. You can't, because you've spoken.
Okay.
So another council needs to go first, but...
So that's...
Just for clarification, quickly, the only way to amend this is you have to take a...you have to strike a particular parcel.
Yep, I will.
You can't just group...
Yep, I have that.
Just letting you know.
Yep.
And letting everyone know.
Yep. So thanks. So those are sort of my, you know, those are sort of broad thoughts that actually, you know, apply to all of the maps, but very specifically to this one. You know, that's where I'm coming from. So I can't support the majority of what is being suggested here. And I would also remind everyone that the planning board did vote unanimously not to go forward with these maps. So, thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Councilor. So, ditto to the fact that we all are in possession of the letter dated December 6 from the planning board, that clearly said they voted for, in favor of the...the motion was duly made and seconded to provide a negative recommendation to the proposal to expand the Highway Business District. And that was voted for in favor, zero in opposition, and zero in abstention. So there's our planning board. There certainly has been tremendous, both here in the council and outside the council, citizens' concerns. All the parcels that we're looking at, I mean, when you look at this map A, literally all the spaces are spoken for. We're talking about postage-stamped properties. My understanding is, you could apply for a special permit. If somebody comes and has an idea for one of these postage stamps, they can come and ask for a special permit. Am I correct? So we're not depriving anybody of doing anything that they want to do there. Citizens have spoken very, very well in behalf of us not moving too quickly on this. A speaker at the opening of public comment, you know, made a comment about the cemetery. I mean, as you look at these blocks, there's a cemetery there. Now, maybe somebody might want to come with a special permit to say we want to put more up on ground temporary housing, a long-term...what do they call them? Oseleums? Is that what they call it?
Long-term housing?
Well, you know, so...
That's infinity, Paul.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's permanent. It's permanent housing. Whether it's affordable or not, it's permanent housing. So, a little levity here, but so...
But literally.
Literally. So there's not a whole lot that's going to really change by doing these maps, when we maybe need to be looking at, how do we simplify the process of the special permits? So we get down, we really get down to case by case. And the simple improvements that can be made, the Bell Tower Mall is attached, is not attached. You can't pass easily through the Bell Tower Mall to the other Centerville Mall. And so we're really kind of beating something to...beating something up that, to me, is maybe unnecessary. This is not put down, the tremendous work of the committee that worked on this, and all the effort that went in. I'm not putting that down at all. I'm just kind of saying that, is it necessary that we frustrate our system, and our good citizens, and our planning department by saying, you know, who's listening? Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Councilor Stein-Hilber. I'd like to echo the comments of my fellow councilors, that I think there's been a lot of concerns raised. And I believe that it's premature to be considering these zoning expansions. We have a lot of conversation right now about our wastewater infrastructure. You just heard from our town manager that we're going to be receiving monthly updates to that plan. I don't see the need for rushing into these zoning map amendments this evening.
Councilor Rapp-Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did not support the trifurcation of this item, and simply because, like I did not support 2019-032, which was the expansion of the principal permitted uses, I'll be joining the planning board in their unanimous vote against this expansion. Simply put, lack of infrastructure, traffic, pedestrian safeguards, can't handle what currently exists. So coupled with the recent and significant change to the Highway Business zoning that passed on December 20th, and that was 032, which allowed for those uses other than medical offices and banks without drive-throughs, it now allows a litany of uses by right, requiring little to no public input. Coupled with a proposal to lift the estuary overlay protection within 500 feet either side of Route 28, that's before the Board of Health right now, I think this is misguided and very premature. And the expansion in the name of new growth dollars shouldn't be considered, absolutely, until completion, and adoption, and implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. There is no sewer in this area. This area now could have movie theaters, health club, multiple-family dwellings, by right. That's what this council, except for myself, voted to allow, without any kind of appearance before zoning Board of Appeals. And we've got this area now expanding into our residential areas. And we've listened to the folks that are rebutting this proposed expansion. I cannot support this expansion. And as far as Councilor Hebert's comment commending the committee, this committee didn't work on this expansion. The committee worked for months on changing the uses and allowing the uses. It worked for barely an hour on this. This came from the now-president of the council, who served as president of the zoning committee, or chair of the zoning committee. It came through him. So I have concerns about the genesis of this, and I can't support it, and I urge my councilors not to.
Councilor Levesque?
Fortunately, I disagree with Councilor Rapp-Cassidy. Right from the get-go, this properties in the map was part of the discussion. To say that it wasn't part of the discussion at all is false, completely false. The HO district was talked about in detail. The Honda dealership properties that we'll talk about in map B were included in the...there was a lot of work that was put in. To say that an hour was put in is complete falsehood. And that, you know, I understand the planning board, and we support the planning board. I appreciate the planning board's time. But to say that, I mean, that was...that went through committee unanimously. That went through committee unanimously. If it needed to be discussed more, it should have been discussed more. But to say that that work wasn't put through is an insult to the other people on that committee, and I'm one of those people. So, that being said, I understand that there's certain parts of the maps that might have been considered to be a surprise. And I have no problem discussing those parts of the maps that weren't discussed. And I understand that the Jim Crocker name is a hot-button issue on this proposed map. I personally have asked the hard questions. I personally challenged, in that committee, certain conditions that I wanted to see met from being on the zoning board for three years. So I just don't appreciate the fact that there's stones being thrown his way. I think that he, during that vote to pass this map, he recused himself. And again, it went through unanimously. Now, to say that we need to respond to public comment, 100%. I appreciate all of you, and I think I've discussed that with all of you. So that is important to discuss. And some of my perception has been swayed by that, which it should be. But a lot of work went into this. And to say, and I appreciate Councilor Hebert's appreciation for that, but to say that, you know, there's some sort of agenda here, or, you know, we need those growth dollars. You know, this, I drove through and I visited every one of these properties, every one of them myself. I have no financial interest in any of these things, none. And I drove to every one of those things. And to say that we can have a health club there, it's already there. All these places that we're talking about here is already some sort of 40B housing. It's a type of business. It's a commercial. It's a heavy-used area. We're just trying to include what might be able to be, belong in that area. There's nothing underhanded going on. It's just, it already is being used for those uses. So again, when I was talking about earlier, it's like, and again, yes, the, you know, I'm a father of four children, so I look at it as from a parenting point of view, and this is where I struggle the most, even as a parent. How much permission do I give my kids? If I don't give them enough permission, and I close the, I make it, of course, my oldest probably feels the most, right? That's how it works. I hold that tight. What happens is, he finds out it's better to say you're sorry than ask permission. And some of these properties are saying sorry instead of asking permission, because it costs money to get an architectural plan, to go before the zoning board, to get litigation. So I'm looking at that side of the things, where if we give them that freedom, is it possible that they will do the right thing? Now, I understand, there's people in this room that have more experience in that than I do. But what I was thinking was, along these lines of taking property that's already being used in those areas, and allowing them to currently, you know, improve those areas. This, I mean, there's a, there's housing, there's a boarding house, you know, and again, they have a special permit to do that. But if they wanted to come for redevelopment, that owner, they would go, okay, so what are you doing right now? They open the special permit. Oh, you're already pushing the limits there. You know, I don't know. And so it's hard for them to ask permission. So if we give them the right, will they do the right thing? Again, that's the question, right? I understand that. But to say that this wasn't done in good faith, or an idea that, you know, the work wasn't put in, that's not, it's not true, and it's not right to say that. We worked hard on this. I worked with a clear conscience that this was going forth. Unfortunately, you know, I feel like my ethics are being questioned, and that's unfortunate, because we put time in that. People in that committee missed dinners with their families, and it's unfortunate that it's being, it's called upon by one person's waving their wand. Thank you.
Councilor Cullen?
Yes. I have a lot to say. I'm going to start with the fact that everything that happens in committee doesn't necessarily become a reality. The committees are advisory. And I know we've had this conversation, Councilor Levesque. And it's difficult, and I don't mean to be disparaging, but it's difficult to work hard on something, i.e. marijuana legislation, and have it completely blow up in your face. Or we could say, go up and smoke. Right? And that's, yeah, you're welcome. That's kind of the nature of the beast. When you get the job, you miss dinner with your family. That's just the way it is. So when votes come out of committees, it's up to the 13 of us, whether it has a positive or a negative recommendation, it's up to the 13 of us to then discuss it. That's how the system works. That's why it's a good system. So opinions can be whatever they are. You could work really hard, it doesn't really matter at this point. Here we all are discussing it, okay? It's the strength of the thing before us that matters. It's the reason behind it. I was told the other day, there's no room for emotion in zoning. Just some food for thought. But, you know, there is room for reason in zoning. And since we've been handling this, it's been five meetings now. We started in November. I've had one person contact me that liked it. And then I've had a litany of people write letters, come in, talk. I mean, Mrs. Sweet has been here every time. We've discussed it five times, to the end of the meeting, every time. Our job up here is to listen to the people that we represent. And you can say, well, she's not my constituent, because she's not my constituent. But am I working for the town of Barnstable? And Hyannis? I think I am. And I think it's really important we don't, we don't convolute that. It's very pure in nature. Who's the boss? It's really simple for me. So, you know, for this particular item, I'm gonna, you know, I've got to agree with Councilor Beanbender, that I see the zoning, whether it's north or west of Old Stage Road, however you hold the map, I guess. I went to Nosset, so sorry about that. Everything was easy down there, you know, it's just...I don't see any room for the zoning there. I do see room for the zoning in the CVS portion of things. But I have a hard time with the north of Old Stage Road on this particular item. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Dagwone?
Yes, I just want to say, as a member of this committee, it was a committee to review zoning and regulatory process. During those meetings, I found that we had business owners that came in and spoke at our meetings. And we didn't get as many residential people come in to speak. I've heard more from the residential side since it's come to the council. And so that opens up our eyes. I would love to have had some, the same ones that came during the meeting, some of the business owners, so that we have a more balanced view of things. It seems to be one-sided, in terms of the presentations today. And I'm from Hyannis, and I understand the neighborhoods that are being, will be affected by that. And whether it's one or two or three neighbors, it was designed to be residential. So we have to be very careful about coming in now and including commercial businesses abutting residential areas. But I just want to say, I would have liked to have heard more from the folks that, some of the business side of this project. But I have a clear view, a much more clear view of the concerns of the residents, since this issue has come to the council. And so I have strong feelings about it both ways, but living in the area that I saw the same thing kind of happen where I lived, and what that did for the neighborhood, and the issues that came up. And so I side with the residential residents who are going to be affected by this.
Thank you for that. And you bring up a good point, that at the committee level, there were some other voices that came in there. And we should also remember, as a council, we had a joint public hearing back in December. And at that public hearing, there was a lot more pro and con. You had business owners in here. Public hearing was closed, so that's another reason why you don't have a constant stream of people coming in, because we had that public hearing. But just remembering all sides that were spoken back then. Councilor Neary?
Thank you. This, obviously, is another contentious subject that is going on. I tend to be more of a pragmatist, I think. I look at all of these zoning changes with, I think, an open mind. I look at all of these zoning changes with, I think, an open mind as to, I hope, leaning towards residents' wills regarding their own properties. But it is about property ownership, ultimately. And when I look at these maps, and I walk down the street and target, for lack of a better word, each one of these properties, it just comes to my mind in saying, why don't we call it what it is? Why are we, why does our zoning not call what is actually physically there, operating, something that it isn't? When you look at the individual maps, I know we're only talking about Map A currently. Map A has 18 parcels on it, okay? If we include everything on it, other than the two that have just been struck. So 16 are left. Two, two properties are single-family, or would be deemed single-family residential. And I'm open to looking at any of these things, if there was something to be amended. But to me, it's, call it what it is. Call it what it is, and zone it appropriately for the location. When you look at the principal permitted uses that we ground to death, ask yourself the question, why not? Look at that property and say, why not? A lot of the conversation, we had a great conversation, Ms. Riley and Ms. Hannan, I thought was wonderful. And it's about, when you look at that property and you say, okay, well, I don't want a, I don't want a senior living house here, for whatever reason, it's irrelevant. The property's too small. Or how about this single-family dwelling that would be kind of nice if it turned into a multifamily, or two-family? But yet, the zoning the way it currently sits requires you to go through hoops to get it done. Call it what it is. Call the properties what they are. There are certainly areas of these maps that fall close to residential areas. And hey, this is not a winner-take-all. This is something, trying to come up with a solution that makes sense, makes sense going forward. I understand the infrastructure. Conversations we had, it was great conversations, was, okay, what if the business changed? Or what if the particular use changed? Great question. Will that add additional vehicle traffic? Will it or won't it? And you can go through the mental gymnastics on all of these properties, and ultimately, it's not significant. Chances are, it's not significant. Sure, there's a possibility that somebody comes in and buys up 10 of these parcels and does something with it. But every one of those steps requires additional oversight by different areas of the town. So I just think that we should call it what it is. Look at the individual parcels. If there's an issue with it, if there's amendment to be made, my ears are open, but it's common sense, and I think this is just something we should move forward with. Just pick the parcels, move forward. The idea was to try to take multiple-zone parcels and make them into a zone. The idea was to try to create boundary lines for business, or boundary lines for these particular uses that made sense in the areas, and to try to do that in, in, for lack of a better word, a concentrated way, and not have it all split up. Be nice to know from a, from a planning and from a process of the employees of the town, when they look at this area, they go, oh, I know what goes there. Instead of, hold on, wait a second. Is that HO or HB? Is it residential? Give me a minute. I'll see if I can find out for you. And a lot of these properties fall into that. It's my comments on it.
Any other counselors? Counselor Beedenbender?
I just want to add two comments regarding the business owners speaking up and so-and-so forth during the committee, so-and-so forth. And you mentioning that, you know, we had them coming in early on. Well, that was only when we were discussing the uses. That wasn't about this map. So that's a, what?
It was a joint hearing for both.
So, okay, so what I, you know, they know that this discussion is happening, and I had actually been hoping to have someone in the business community reach out, as well as the constituents, and I haven't heard anything. But that aside, and then to Counselor Neary's comments about property rights, yes, I agree. And that applies to residential property rights as well. So when we make zoning changes, we have to think of those residents and the impact that it's going to have on them. And there are sections of these maps that aren't going to have an impact on residential communities, but there are a lot of parts of the maps that do. And so I think, I think we do a disservice to this community if we only think of one certain type of property owner's rights.
Anyone else have any general comments, or are we moving on to amendments? Counselor Cullum?
Just a point of information. Can you please tell us which counselors sat on the committee?
It was Counselor Dagwan, Counselor Levesque, Counselor Neary, Counselor Rap Crisetti, Counselor Schnepp, and Counselor Crocker. Counselor Rap Crisetti?
I just want to clarify one thing that was misstated by Counselor Levesque, who served on the committee. That was not a unanimous vote for the expansion. Counselor Dagwan opposed it, and Counselor Schnepp abstained. So it was not a positive vote. She was there.
It may or not, you said it wasn't a positive vote. It was a positive vote. Perhaps the vote was positive. The recommendation was positive. Okay. All right. We're kind of flying the plane around here. Let's try to land it. Does anyone have any actual amendments here? Counselor Hebert?
It's not like we don't, what we decide does not influence what's going on there. I arrived in Barnstable in 1981. And by that time, the Centerville Shopping Center was already there, and I guess Bell Tower Mall was shortly thereafter. But in any event, apparently, they had, the original people who wanted to develop that, wanted to do something more like, a little bit like Mashpee Commons, smaller buildings, make a little village. And apparently, all I understood is, at the time, it was wildly rejected by somebody, or they said it was against our zoning, or against our planning. And we ended up with what basically looks like Strip Mall. I don't know if that's, I'm not trying to be negative or anything. But, so when we do make these decisions, we do affect what's going to go in those areas. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you. I don't know who, I think it was Counselor Cullum, who said there's no room for emotion in zoning. I like that. Thank you. Maybe, I take, I don't know, my vision of this, or my thoughts of this, are a little longer-term. After sitting up here for 11 years, I've seen a few of these comes through that have really got people fired up, really excited, or very upset. I remember as a newer counselor, Stewart's Creek, having to move to the high school, because there were so many people talking about it. And a majority of people spoke in opposition to us putting sewer through Stewart's Creek. It was, to this day, that's still one of the hardest decisions, one of the hardest votes I ever had to make, because I knew I was impacting people's pocketbook. I was impacting them financially, and it could impact them for years to come. So that was very difficult. But you had to sit back and look, okay, what is the future of this area? What is the future of Barnstable and the Cape? And not to be too deep, but that was the point of that vote. I can remember on West Main Street, where there used to be a cleaner, there's Barnstable Brewing there now, and when they wanted to go in there, we had quite a few people here that were really against a brewery going in there. That's just the worst thing that's ever going to happen to West Main Street. There's going to be parties and drunken stuff going on, and trucks. They're a really wonderful neighbor in that neighborhood now. They improved the parking in the area, and they're a great business to have there. Will this impact traffic? Possibly. If we voted yes tonight unanimously, there's not going to be 1,000 more cars at that intersection tomorrow morning. It's not going to happen. If someone tomorrow put in there, that wanted to take one of these small, I think someone said postage-stamped parcels, and start a business there, it's going to take months, possibly years, for that to happen. I've seen it go on many, 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 many times. So when I look at this setback, my, actually, my very first thought when I saw this was, this isn't that big of a deal. But then obviously, it became one, so I did more studying, like many counselors here, drove and walked through these properties. And yes, everybody, when we come to property rights, the property rights of our constituents and the people who live here are number one. Very close behind it, though, when, I don't know if someone said, and if I'm misspeaking, please forgive me, that new growth dollars aren't important, but they are very important to the lifeblood of us, our community, and our schools. So again, I don't mean to misquote anyone up here, but I also have to look at that, and what's going to happen in the future here. And as far as sending everything to Main Street and Hyannis, if we're talking traffic, good Lord in heaven, have you ever walked on Main Street in the summer? I don't drive down there. Luckily, I live close enough that I can walk. But I see and hear South Street, Main Street, North Street all the time, and I have for 26 years. So I'm trying to take a longer-range view of this vote. And I've gone back and forth. I've spoke to others. I have had business people reach out to me, as well as constituents. And actually, one of them was surprised when I told them I was in favor of this, while I thought a couple changes might be made. This does have my support for many reasons, but again, it's not an easy vote. Please don't ever think any of us up here, just, oh, yeah, that's good. All right, let's move on. Vote yes. That's not how it works. Everybody has a very good, solid reason, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, and before I'm done up here, I'll probably say it one or two more times, that I always believe each counselor up here is doing what they feel is the very best for the town of Barnstable, and for everyone sitting out there. So no matter how the vote goes, please don't think that that is not the case. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Beedenbender?
A comment, and then I'd like to offer up two, never mind, I can't do both.
No, you can't do both.
I'd like to, I'd like to offer up two amendments. My First Amendment, 2019-042A, is to amend the map to strike the expansion west of Old Stage Road in Centerville.
Well, you have to actually, on this template here?
Yeah, I got it.
Read it exactly as it is. It was done by legal. And then?
So was this.
And then the parcel, map and parcel. Has to be done, map and parcel.
I am going to do that. I've got it right here.
Well, this is what was developed for us to read. I moved to, under section, I moved to amend.
All right.
We just want to make sure we're doing it for legal purposes, that's all. It's very precise.
Okay, but legal did this for me.
Well, this is the one we're working on.
Okay, okay, fine. Under Section 1 of 2019-042A, I move to amend the town zoning map, the Centerville zoning map, and the Osterville zoning map referenced in Section 1 of the order by striking from those maps, the parcels identified as Map 189, Parcel 002-001, Map 189, Parcel 003, Map 189, Parcel 067, Map 189, Parcel 058, Map 189, Parcel 057, Map 189, Parcel 055. And for the audience, for the constituents, just so you know, we're talking about that section west of Beechwood Cemetery.
And to clarify, Map 189, Parcel 003 has already been removed.
Okay, yep.
Second?
I have a second. Is there any discussion on this proposed amendment? I have a motion, move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question on this amendment?
Roll call, please.
Madam Clerk? And this is just to move the question. Are you withdrawing the roll call? Okay. So again, this is to move the question on the proposed amendment. All those in favor of moving the question say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So again, this is the proposed amendment on 2019-042A, as read. All those in favor?
Roll call, please.
Of this amendment. Madam Clerk?
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
Abstained.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
No.
Wallace?
You have the final count there. Amendment passes. Any other?
I have a Second Amendment.
Okay.
And this goes to, this is again for our folks in the audience, this goes to concerns raised about tightening up our zoning, where you have, to make it easier for businesses, and to streamline the process for business owners. So my next amendment is to amend the map to rezone parcels currently zoned HO to HB, and put Parcel 209...
I gotta stop you there. We have to do it parcel by parcel. And we have to go off of the template that was provided by planning and by legal. So if you want to strike a parcel, that's fine. We just need to do it, we have to do the map and parcel.
Okay.
That's the only way to do it.
Put on your mic.
Well, this is, I haven't recognized you, but...
I'm sorry.
This was provided by you, so I'm hoping we're not getting a second story on what was provided, but go ahead.
The other side of the story is, the amendment that was made to strike 209-020, I think, accomplishes what Counselor Beedenbender is trying to accomplish. So as the article in front of you currently stands, the HB, the HO is, would be the HB without any further amendment. And I thought that's what Counselor Beedenbender was seeking.
Okay, but in previous discussions, it's been very clear that you can't just, we can't just amend with swapping zones. You had to go map and parcel. It's been very precise.
All right, I...
So I just want to be, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're doing it correct. And that's on the advice of legal. So now it's a little bit different from the podium, which happens from time to time. But I want to stick with what we've, what has been discussed through this whole process, to be very precise.
No, if I may, I...
And also, I think you were speaking for Counselor Beedenbender. Were you trying to eliminate just that one parcel?
No.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute. I guess I'm confused now. In essence, what I want to do is, what is currently HO, just make it HB, because it is effectively...
We're going to take it map and parcel.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just trying to give you a sense of what...
I understand, I understand. I'm not, I just want to be clear to everyone, I don't want to do it in two different ways. If you have a parcel you want to strike, make the amendment to strike that parcel. And if there's five of them, make the amendment to strike five parcels, but they have to be listed, each parcel by parcel.
Okay, all right. So to amend the map, so this is my proposed amendment, is to amend the map to rezone the following parcels currently zoned HO to HB. Map 189, Parcel 209-086, CND. 20, sorry, Map 189, Parcel 209-085. Map 189, Parcel 209-084. Zero, Map 189, Parcel 083. Map 189, Parcel 082.
No. Yeah, you have a different map. We have to work off the same document.
Sorry, 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 I thought I was. Sorry, sorry. Okay.
Can we work off of this one? And it has the amendment language right there. I don't know what you're reading off of, but we have to read off of the same thing, all 13 of us. It was provided by legal before this meeting. It was developed all day with legal and planning. It was in the packets to start the meeting.
This map doesn't work?
This one right here. And it has the paragraph, how you make amendment, emotion. You need to read it, and then do the map and parcels.
Oh, Jesus, I need my glasses. I can't see this. This is long distance, it's not going to work. Oh, man. All right. Okay. To amend the map to rezone parcels currently zoned HO to HB...
I gotta stop you. I don't know what you're reading off of. This packet right here. I'm sorry, this is very frustrating. Right here.
This one.
Okay. Okay.
Right? Yeah, right, is that not what I'm holding up?
You're getting, no.
Second page, right?
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
This is nothing about rezoning anything, at the, at that paragraph at the top. Ruth, have you provided two separate packets that we don't all have?
No, I have not, I, I'm sorry I wasn't as articulate as I should have been. Currently before you is a proposal that would change what is currently HO to HB. So that's what currently is before the council. No, I'm sorry, to, to HO to HB, except there was an additional parcel, which was...
I gotta, I gotta stop you there.
Yes.
This is about expanding the highway business zone, and include, and expanding it on to other parcels. We have the maps in front of us with the proposed expansion. If someone wants to take a parcel out of the proposed expansion, make the amendment to strike the parcel, it's all written right here. Correct? You gave this to me.
I absolutely...
You called me three times today, to keep, to make sure we use this, and now we seem to be reading off of other documents, and now you're talking about the item in front of us, to rezone this and that, we're talking about an expansion. The crosshatched ones are the parcels that were recommended to be expanded, so if we want to take them out...
Alright, yep, then I got nothing to say.
And I'm not mad at any, I'm not upset at anyone in particular, I just want to be operating off of the same piece of paper.
I got nothing to say. May I just try to, I, I know I'm not really being as clear as I should be...
I think maybe you got to stop on your head, but...
No, so let me just try to explain, what was currently before the council is that the HB, the HO would be turned to the HB, there was only one additional parcel that was not currently in the, there was only a small portion, portion of that parcel in the OM, and that has been removed, that is parcel 2009-020. I guess what I'm trying to say is, if the intent of the council, and in the intent of Council Beanbender's amendment is to change, to assure that the OM is changed to the HB, nothing for, no further amendment has to take place, it's already taken place.
Okay. Let me just stop you, and I appreciate you trying to explain this, but I also don't want it assumed what a council is trying to do, okay?
Okay.
That's why we're trying to be very precise, that's why this was drawn up, I know you worked on it all day, there was many phone calls, and Elizabeth helped you with this, so that all of us had the same language, and we were very precise, and if you're going to strike something from the expansion or make an amendment, that we read it exactly like it is, in the map and parcel. And you're, you're getting into something that has not been discussed all day today.
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is already been accomplished, if I, if I just may.
Alright, stop, please stop, please stop.
Okay.
Council Beanbender, do you have another parcel which you would like to make an amendment to remove from this map? Okay. Anyone else have any amendments?
Move the question.
I have a second to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question on item 2019-042A? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we're moving the question. So this is item 2019-042A as amended, and it's a roll call vote, two-thirds.
Can you read the amendment, can you read, what, what is it that we're exactly voting on?
We have eliminated...
First page?
The first page, or, this is, Council Hebert, under item A, okay, on the first page, we've eliminated all of those parcels from the expansion. And then on the second page, it's just the zero, the last parcel, 020. That was removed. Yeah, and those were the, those were the amendment, the motions that Council Lebec put forward in the beginning. Okay? So again, it's a roll call vote, item 2019-042A as amended. Madam Clerk?
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
I abstain.
Flores?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
No.
Hebert?
No.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beanbender?
Going to abstain.
What's the final count, Madam Clerk?
Got seven, four, two abstentions and three noes.
Yep.
Okay. I have no idea.
So that does not pass as amended. Okay. We're going to move on to item 2019-042B. Is there any discussion on this item? We're moving west to east.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a state of...
Yes, Mr. President.
After speaking with Ethics, they told me if I was not in a butter to a parcel, that, to a map, that I could participate in the map discussion. This map is going to be, has already been trificated, it will be discussed on its own, so I'm returning to the dais to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we're on item 2019-042B. Is there any council discussion on this item? Council Beanbender?
Just to reiterate, you know, things that have already been said about this, but I, I don't want it to be absent from people's thinking when they're thinking about this particular map. In particular, this triangle where, you know, begins with Rockland Trust and goes to Strawberry Hill, right, so it's the, the Main Street, West Main Street, 28th split to Strawberry Hill Road. There is a lot of residential property in there. It is also a very tight corridor, there is, there is, there is not the infrastructure to support build out there. It may down the road be something that's appropriate to do, but at this point in time, and I think the, the local residents have made it extremely clear, that, that this is not something that is, is wanted, and I, I cannot, I, I have not heard a, a good rationale as to why this part, these parcels should be included in the HB district, so I, I will not be, be, I, I will, I will make an amendment to, to remove that from the map.
Any other councillors? Council Crocker?
Thank you very much. What we're talking about is some very different pieces of real estate here on two different thoroughways, and so I would ask that we all be considerate of each and every parcel. I know there's a number of you that have gone into the driveways, looked at each and every parcel, and we should be discussing it in that type of format. What we have is, we have sewer coming down from the high school in this direction. What we had just recently was, we had what's called the McCartham Building that was built for the Cape Carlin Hospital, he went and spent the money to bring the infrastructure of the sewer down. What we know is, we've all voted to put money coming down Finney's Lane to bring the sewer line, and that would also give us a stub towards Strawberry Hill Road. What you must do is perhaps take a page out of Chatham, to really look at how this may assist us in accomplishing a number of goals. In Chatham, West Chatham, they had a section of Route 28 also, which was a state highway, which needs the state curb cut, needs all the controls that you're going to see through that. They had section there where there was a restaurant for sale on three and four acres of land. The restaurant was assessed for $400,000. The restaurant was proposed to be six condominiums, excuse me, 10 condominiums, the condominiums were assessed for $600,000 each, and the assessment valuation went from $400,000 to $6 million. There were no children brought into the school system, it was a complete windfall, and when the development agreement was made, it was written in the development agreement that the developer would agree to connect to sewer as soon as sewer came in front of the place. When you have infrastructure like that, when you have people in front of you trying to cut a deal for the development, you'll have the opportunity to insist that anytime the utility comes in front of them, they'll have to pay to make the connections. What that gave them was a great deal of funding, and they did in fact put all of the sewer in. It did allow the developer to design a septic system, which was prepared to bring, and had great fourth line in it, was prepared to bring the sewer line to the street where the sewer was going to be. So that is a cooperative effort by the town in a development package with a developer, bringing new growth dollars to us, and accomplishing all of our goals in that time. So, I could tell you about that clearly, because I'm a guy who developed that. So that's a story, that's my story, and that's a story that worked, and that's a story that paid big revenue to Chatham, and became something for Chatham. Now, we're talking about that possibility for ourselves in the right area, and it has to be the right area. And I have every faith and belief that all 13 of us will make good choices here, but we need to be looking at these individually. We can't just unequivocally say no. First of all, we have the estuary overlay in play. Whenever the estuary overlay's in play, we're not going to have rampant growth, because you can't advance any discharge in that site until you prove that there's new alternative systems, or that you have sewer connection. So, it's, it's all about a future design, it's about a design plan, it's about an assessment, it's about looking at ways to improve corridors, and don't think that this traffic study stuff is great fodder, but you cannot get a permit from the state curb cut without spending about 25 grand, which is what I did in Chatham on Route 28, and without spending about six months. So nothing happens fast, and nothing happens cheap when you're dealing with the state. So that's the criteria that any developer who looks at this will be facing. He'll be facing every board that wants to know, how are you going to take care of the infrastructure when there's an estuary overlay? How are you going to handle the traffic issues? And how do you go forward from here? And so, we're, we're talking about planning because it, it has sensibility. We're not talking about what will be there, what won't be there. When a new tile shop goes there, do I, instead of driving from my house in Osterville to Yarmouth to get tile, will I stop in Hyannis to get tile? So where have I stopped traffic beyond that place? Everybody talks about the traffic on that street, you're, you're stopping the through traffic as well. You can't accurately depict this without truly talking about the use of each and every site as they come forward. But we need, please, to be sensible, look at these one at a time, try to decide the ones that you want out, let's get them out, but let's not suggest there isn't any value to any of these properties, that would, that would be short sighted. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Council Schnep?
I'm concerned that if we start looking at these maps, and looking at each parcel, we could be considered spot zoning. And I, I think that what we really need to be doing is looking at this in a very thoughtful way, taking into all the considerations of the infrastructure needs, the residential concerns, I think we're just a little bit too early to, to be making those decisions. We, the process we had at that committee was long, and, you know, there was a lot of discussion to change those uses, to make them by right. It made a lot of sense to try to streamline that process, but the whole idea of expanding the map was a very, very short process, and I, I just think it needs to be part of a bigger planning effort, that we would be short sighted to prove these maps as is.
Any other councillors? Council Crocker?
I'd ask us all to take a look at the map that's in front of us. The golden areas are what's already highway business, the strict areas is what we're proposing. If you want to talk about spot zoning, tell me why it jumps from Lambert's to CVS, tell me why it jumps from there over to the CPA next to the building. That is spot zoning. Tell me why Honda Garage doesn't go to South Main, to Strawberry Hill Road. That is spot zoning. Tell me why the other piece of offices across from Honda doesn't get covered by this. That is spot zoning. If we're going to talk about spot zoning, talk about what the color would look like if we made this uniform. We would create the zone. We would create the zone. When you look at some of them that are in hash marks, ask yourself what they are, do you really think that 40B next to the CPA is ever going to change in our lifetime? I don't, but don't you think it's not wrong for that zone to be gold? You know, we're talking about some things. Mr. Childs, an excellent, excellent vendor in Hyannis, electric company, had a real good system going, had, had a big electric company, now it's all about alarms, he's got other users in there. He's going to go home someday and clip coupons, he's going to have four or five users in the building that his business paid for. And why is that? Because he hopefully will be in highway business. Mr. Childs is in favor of having the highway business there, not the spot zoning that he's currently living with. We need to really talk about this in a, in a, in a real, clear, concise manner. You can take them one at a time, or you can look at it as a zone of color that should be there. When you look at your lowest picture, when you're starting to see Hyannis Honda, and it starts to go towards the high school, see the stream of gold? That's, that's a zone. See the patchwork we're talking about? We're trying to create the zones. There's nothing wrong with what you're doing, but if you don't like one or two of the pieces, pull it out, throw it up for discussion. But don't suggest that it's wrong to run the color from head to toe and create the zone that's necessary. Thank you.
Any other councillors?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Council Beanbender?
Under section one of 2019-042B, I move to amend the town zoning map, the Centreville zoning map, and the Hyannis zoning map referenced in section one of the order by striking from those maps, the parcels identified as map 229 parcel 101, map 250 parcel 049, map 250 parcel 009, map 249 parcel 063, map 249 parcel 053-001, map 249 parcel 053, map 249 parcel 054-CD, map 249 parcel 055-CD. And for the audience out there, that is the Lambert's Triangle.
Alright, I have a second. Any council discussion on this motion?
Mr. President?
President Crocker?
Those particular parcels, if you're looking at it, are very unique to themselves. I've been in the driveways, I've been up the property, I've looked at them closely. What you have is a very unusual convenience store on, next to Lambert's, and then you have these open parcels around it that seem to have one house, or one structure on them. And then you hit the John B. LaBelle Common driveway for about nine or 10 units. I know that, I built that, so that's multifamily right there, and we're talking about putting them under the stripes. So what you have is a very congruence grouping of raw land that would probably favor more for a developer, would favor more housing than any other aspect, because there is not the visibility of, of real retail. So when you don't allow the highway business here, we're, we're probably striking an opportunity of, of a premier situation to have housing. Secondly, we know the sewer is just four doors up at McCartham's building, so I, I just ask everybody to think about that as we discuss this. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Council Neary?
Again, it's back to the same thing, call it what it is, these properties down here, bear with me, my eyes, I'm old now, 249, oh, I think it's 54 CND, and, can't read the other one, right next to it, to the right of it, I mean, they're apartment buildings. They are what they are, they're not single family, they're, they are what they are. I don't, I, I just don't know why that they would be removed from, from that, from that, that part of it.
Any other councillors? Council Lebec?
I can understand that, and I think we've mentioned, you know, our appreciation of Mrs. Sweet being here, that her property, she's not a big fan of that area being developed, you know, because of this reason, and, you know, because of her reasons that she stayed in, but I, I think that, you know, if, you know, maybe if we want to talk about, and I understand that's... that's not what's on the floor right now, but, you know, I would be, I would understand if that, maybe that we wanted to remove that, or, you know, that type of thing, even though you could do deed it right, if you could put it in deed, that you don't wanna have anything else but residential, you could call Janet Milkman at BLT and donate that as free space in perpetuity, forever. And so that could be done. So I don't, that's not an obstacle, that's not intermountable. And as far as the other two pieces of property, you know, I think it would be great if, given an opportunity, maybe, you know, a developer could come in there. Those two houses, I guarantee you, there's a septic system that probably, I mean, I don't know for a fact, but those old houses, those old septic systems, if there's an opportunity to get some, again, more housing that we desperately need, and, again, this, it's a, no one exactly knows, there's no permits, there's no severs on the ground, but again, it gives opportunity, you know, not necessarily for growth as far as business, but growth just in general of better development, less blight, and just property improvement that we can tax, you know, increase tax dollars.
Any other counselors? Counselor Cullum?
Yes. So, yes, all that, but the fact is, Ms. Sweet has been here every single meeting saying she doesn't want that for her property. Don't talk to me, I'm talking to you. You know, I mean, the fact is, she's spoken out boldly against it every single time. So assuming that you know better or more than her about what she wants for her property, whether it's in her lifetime or after her lifetime, is just kind of overreach, quite frankly. I picture that sort of development around fresh holes, let's sewer there. You know, that's intense housing, that's the density we need, that's all of it. But this is a neighborhood. I look at this and I see my neighborhood. I see Oak Neck Road, I see C Street, I see Highland, I see houses that are rundown, houses that will be repurchased, houses that will, I see houses, I see families, I see little neighborhoods. And I can't abide that. I'm sorry, I just can't abide it.
Counselor Cracker?
I think the important thing to suggest is we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We have eight amendments here to remove all eight. So that wipes out the whole triangle. So if there's anything in your heart, or in your mind, that says, let's not pass the eight, but let's come back, we can revisit two of them or three of them, any, just because an amendment fails, doesn't mean that we can't enter a new amendment to take out the Sweet property or whatever's appropriate. But right now, what we're looking at is a complete takeaway of all eight properties. And I'm not sure, looking at each and every one, that I believe that that's a sensible approach. I'm not saying that Mrs. Sweet shouldn't be pulled out if you wanna pull her out, but I don't, I don't know why eight of them have to be removed for this purpose, but that's just me.
Let me ask a question. What does Mrs. Sweet's neighbor look like? What does her property look like if we leave her there? To me, it looks like Willy Loman. It looks like she's the last man standing, last woman standing, excuse me, in a neighborhood that used to exist.
No, she's a director.
Hold on. We gotta stick on the eight, the motion that's been put on the floor, we're getting into kind of other things. So Counselor Cracker, President Cracker pointed out, there's eight parcels that have been, there's been a motion made to eliminate them, so let's stick the discussion on that. If you wanna come back with another amendment, see how this goes.
I think you have a motion in a second.
Yeah, I already had a motion in a second, now we're on discussion of this motion. Counselor Rapacecki? All right, I have a second, move the question. All those in favor of moving the question on this proposed amendment, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So the vote now is to, on the proposed amendment by Counselor Bean Bender to remove these eight parcels as read. All those in favor of this amendment? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
Flores?
No.
Rapacecki?
Abstain.
Hebert?
No.
Levesque?
No.
Neary?
No.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
No.
Tinsley?
No.
Wallace?
No.
Breeden Bender?
Yes.
Cracker?
No.
Cullum?
Yes.
The amendment doesn't pass.
Does not pass, no.
We'll continue.
Close.
No, simple majority. It does not pass. Right. So we'll continue with discussion on this item, and we're on the item 2019-042B. Any other counselors on this item?
Can I get a clarification on which pieces are Mrs. Sweet's, please? By parcel number and count, I'm unclear on that. One more time?
Vice President, I think as he visited all the properties.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to remove, to remove from Section 1 of the 2019-042B, I move to amend the town map, the Centerville zoning map, the Hyannis zoning map, referenced in Section 1 of the order by striking from the map the parcels identified as Map 249 Parcel 053001, Map 249 Parcel 053.
I have a second. Discussion on this proposed amendment. Counselor Bean Bender?
My issue with this proposed amendment is that I understand what President Cracker is trying to, is suggesting, and I, and it's mimicked by Counselor Levesque and Counselor Neary. The issue is not about Ms. Sweet's actual property. I mean, her property can be zoned HB, and she chooses to just keep it a house. I mean, that's not the issue. The issue is her surrounding neighborhood. The issue is that that triangle goes HB, she loses her neighborhood. That is the issue. It's not about her parcel, it's about what's going on around her parcel. And that's why I can't support that.
Counselor Cracker?
Mr. President, I've been in the real estate business for 30 years. I've been a developer all those years, and there has never once been zoning as a single reason for a development. Never once. Zoning is only one of the cards that are necessary to promote economic growth. You may find out that what you wanna build is not acceptable to the zoning board, to whatever board you're going through. You may find that the state won't give you a curb cut, you may find that your bank won't fund you, that your deal doesn't make sense. So for us to suggest that by putting these zones here that this place is on fire, that is so much hyperbole that I can't stand it, to be quite frank. What we have is a sensible approach to zoning. What I heard is several people tell me their concern for Mrs. Sweet. I am offering to vote to take Mrs. Sweet's piece out. If you don't want to take Mrs. Sweet's piece out, don't vote for it. That's all. That's what this is gonna be the rest of the night, voting for something or not voting for something. And we're gonna have roll calls, 'cause I'm gonna ask for a roll call on all of it. So let's go. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Counselor Rapacecki? All right, I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question on the proposed amendment, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we will move on the proposed amendment to eliminate the two parcels as read. All those in favor of this amendment?
Aye.
You?
Roll call. I'm sorry, I did call for a roll call. Sorry. Roll call on all of it.
Madam Clerk?
Flores?
Yes.
Rapacecki? Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Breeden Bender?
No.
Cracker?
Yes.
Cullum?
No.
Dagwone?
No.
I believe the amendment passes.
Eight to four.
Yep, okay, so the amendment passes. Any further discussion on the overall item 042B?
Move the map?
I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question on item 2019-042B? Say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, this is item 2019-042B as amended, and it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Abstain. Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Breeden Bender?
No.
Cracker?
Yes.
Cullum?
No.
Dagwone?
No.
Flores?
Yes.
Doesn't pass. Eight, eight, four, one. All right, we're on to item 2019-042C. Any counsel discussion on this map, this item?
Move the map?
I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question on item 2019-042C, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, this is item 2019-042C, and this is a roll call vote. All those, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Abstain.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Breeden Bender?
No.
Cracker?
Yes.
Cullum?
No.
No.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapacecki?
No.
Seven, seven yeses.
I don't think it passed.
No.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, past president. Looking down the line, Counselor Hebert, could I ask for some help, please, on number five, page 5, 219-087, and we're fortunate enough to have the airport manager with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2019-087, supplemental appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $765,000 for the fiscal year 2019 airport operating budget. Mr. President, this is open for a public hearing. Roll call.
Thank you very much on the public hearing. I guess I'd take the rationale for a moment, then we'll try the public hearing, please.
Thank you for having me here tonight, I'll try to make this.
Thank you for enduring us. Thank you.
The order in front of you, the appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $765,000 for fiscal year 19 operating budget, is to increase the operating budget to cover two items, $750,000 for aviation fuel purchases and $15,000 for legal fees. I'll start with the rationale for the fuel purchase. The request is to fund jet fuel purchases through the end of the fiscal year. There are two major factors associated with the need to increase this budget line item. The first is market increases in the jet fuel price per gallon and increases in projected fuel sales being sold. In fiscal year 19, when we calculated the, what we assumed the jet fuel price per gallon would be, we calculated at $2.45 per gallon. Right now, the average is about $2.80 per gallon. So as you know, we're estimating what our budget will be well in advance of what that fiscal year will be, so we made an estimate based on what the average was at that time. We also estimated selling 765,000 gallons over the past several years. That has been pretty consistent with how we've been doing for our fuel sale. The budget was just over 1.8 million. The average fuel purchase price per gallon really fluctuates quite significantly. You can see for the table on the right-hand side, for various fiscal years, the average price per gallon at a high of $3.64 to a low of $1.94. It changes weekly, it changes based on the cost of oil, refining costs, the distribution of that fuel to different locations around the country and around the region. So because of these fluctuations, it makes it difficult for us to sometimes predict from fiscal year to fiscal year what that cost may be for fuel. We also calculated that we would be selling 765,000 gallons. However, this is a good problem to have. Over the last first and second quarters of fiscal year 19, the airport has already purchased and sold over 84% of what we projected our fuel needs would be for purchases and for sales. So right now, as of the end of January, 645,000 gallons was purchased, so that's 84% of what we anticipated needing. The table here provides an overview on the left-hand side of gallons purchased, and the right-hand side is gallons sold. It looks at fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. What I want to point out is basically on the right-hand side, to date, basically from July through January of the fiscal year, we are, we have sold over 14.5% of where we were at in fiscal year 18. So we're improving, we're increasing our sales, which is, which is great, it just wasn't anticipated to do it this quickly. The airport tracks year over year and month over month what our average fuel loads would be. We stay pretty consistent, February through June, we typically purchase anywhere from 25 to 27 loads of fuel. This year, we anticipate doing the same, but because we have increased our fuel sales, we think that we're going to need more money. So if we were to take the $2.80 per gallon, which is the average price right now, multiply that by the amount of fuel loads that we would need, that's about $720,000, just over that. If you look at the original appropriation for 1.8 million, to date, we have spent 1.7 million. Again, the price of fuel has gone up and we're selling more fuel. With the available budget that we have, just over 84,000, we're definitely going to need more money before the end of the fiscal year to be able to purchase the fuel that we need. The good part about this is that whatever fuel, we do not purchase, whatever sales, we don't, the money goes back into our reserves. We also replenish our reserves when we sell the fuel. I'll step into the second request, which is for legal fees for 15,000, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have. The major factor is associated with the need to increase our legal fees is because we have a number of different topics that crop up from time to time that are really aviation-related topics that we need to respond to. In fiscal year 17, additional fees were associated with the bankruptcy of Island Airlines. We needed help from our outside counsel to look at recouping our costs and our lease fees that were due to us. In fiscal year 18, we were preparing the request for proposal for the Kmart parcel, and in fiscal year 19, we are still proceeding forward with the lease negotiations for the Kmart parcel, as well as various other leases that are due to expire. Anytime that the airport has an opportunity to go to the town's legal council, we'll do that. There are some instances where we just need aviation professionals and aviation experts to help us, and that's when we seek the assistance of outside counsel. The original appropriation for legal fees was just over 45,000. To date, we have spent 27,000. We have about $17,000 remaining in that line item. However, we've looked at our averages of what we have, what we have spent on legal fees, and roughly it turns out to be about $5,000 a month. Some months you spend more, some months you don't spend any at all, it just depends on the topic at hand. So we're asking for an additional $15,000 to cover those fees to the end of the fiscal year. What does this do to our airport reserves? Right now, in July 1 of 2018, our reserves were certified at just over 3.5 million. With this request, that would reduce that to 2.7 million. However, you have to take into account the assumed replenishment of those reserves as we sell fuel, and then also our profit on the fuel. So we could potentially bring that back up to the 3.7 million. Legal fees will not be replenished to our reserves. And with that, I would ask if you have any questions regarding the appropriation.
Just a point of clarification. Just a point of clarification, and we've got to go to the public hearing first, but the seven, it's a combination of 750 and 15 that gets us to 765.
Correct.
Okay, so everybody see the money, how we get to 765. This is a public hearing. That was our rationale. Does anybody from the public want to speak to this issue? Hearing none. I'd take a motion to close the public hearing, please. Any second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Thank you very much. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go past 11 o'clock.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second to go past 11 o'clock. Counselors, what's your pleasure? All those in favor of going past 11 o'clock, I signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Two nays. Thank you. Please record it as two nays, and record the nays if I may say so. Counselor Tinsley, thank you for your consistency. Okay, we're back on to a, I would take a motion if there's no questions of our airport manager. We're fortunate to have her here. Yes, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. When you purchased the fuel, how much do you put surcharge on what you charged the airline for the fuel?
So we put $2.10 for the fees, basically for the purposes of us doing business. If we have a discount fuel program with a particular entity, we have, right now, we currently have four discount fuel programs with four different entities. Depending on what their contract is with us, they get a reduction. So for instance, NetJets has a contract with us for purchasing 200,000 gallons annually from us. Their reduction based on that level that they want to purchase is about 60 cents per gallon. So it depends on who's purchasing the fuel.
So regardless of what it costs you for the fuel, they get that discount?
We discount, right. We discount it from our $2.10 markup.
So what do you actually sell that for? I mean, what is your, so if you, do you, what do you, how do you recoup your expense? Are you making money and selling fuel or losing money?
We are. So we make about 38% profit annually, is roughly between 38 and 40% is what our profit is annually. So what we do is we take the annual, the weekly rate that is identified for fuel. We take that rate, and then we mark it up by $2.10. So for instance, right now, this week, it's $4.74 is what the price is for fuel. If we have companies that are under the fuel discount program, they get a portion of that, like NetJets, 60 cents off of that top.
So you, so this appropriation helps you to make more money, to increase your revenue?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Do I get two hens down there? Yes. Counselor Neary?
Just a question. When you just look, when I'm looking at the gallons purchased versus gallons sold, you have the ability to store the fuel somewhere, I assume at the airport?
Yes.
And I'm just curious, what is the dollar value of the stored fuel? In other words, you've already purchased it. I get the markup in the retailing of it, but there must be a dollar value. Do you have an approximate idea what that dollar value is?
I mean, we could take what fuel we have in the tanks, and we can provide an average dollar amount per gallon to that.
I get it.
We could do that, but because it fluctuates so much, we kind of look at it on an average over the fiscal year. So right now, the average over this fiscal year appears to be tracking towards $2.80.
I get that part of it. I'm just, I'm talking about, you've already purchased the fuel, so it's sitting somewhere at the airport.
Right.
It's not five gallons of fuel. It's 5,000?
We have, right now, on hand, we have just over 55,000 gallons.
55, so now that's where, now you can extrapolate that, take the 280 times the 55,000. So you have money sitting there?
Correct.
Which has already been purchased. Got it?
Correct.
Counselor Schnep?
I have one more kind of municipal finance question. So you've sold almost, you've had an appropriation at one point, almost nine. You obviously made a profit on that appropriation, so you have already built up reserves, right?
Right.
But I'm assuming because you still have to ask our permission for an additional appropriation because you can't just use the money you made as a profit to go toward buying more fuel?
Correct. So we've already, we've balanced that already to say we were going to sell approximately 765,000 gallons. We're selling more. So you're correct. We basically have to identify in our budget what we're going to take in for revenue and what we're going to expect for the purchase of the sale.
So should there have been a increase in that enterprise reserves as a result of the profit, or were there other expenses that kind of?
We show basically what we assumed for the revenue coming in for the jet fuel sales based on.
It was already taken into consideration.
Already taken into consideration, exactly.
Any counselors on my right? Yes, Counselor Tinsley down the end, please. I'm going to call that, but I'm going to vote against it. I had a couple of questions I need to clarify. Thank you. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here we go. Nays?
Nays.
The ayes have it. I'm calling 219087 for a vote, please. We do need a roll call vote, so I'll turn it over to Assistant Clerk Trezor.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, can I make a comment too? No. Okay, yes. It's a good problem.
Rapscetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. It passes. Thank you, Katie, for coming in tonight. And having the mic does have its privileges. As a percentage of your income, how much is earned by fuel sales?
65% is fuel sales.
Very big item for them, so obviously they're dealing with big numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
I'm looking down the line. I'm looking for Mr. Neary, please. I have 2019, it's on page 10, dash 88, and I'm looking to move this and continue it to a date of May 16.
This is new business, to be postponed until May 16? Is that it? Moved to May 16. It's item number 2019-088, and authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the Town of Barnstable and 720 Main Residences LLC for the property located at 720 Main Street Hyannis, as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving 2019-088 to May 16 at the applicant's request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Thank you very much. I am on page 23, and I will ask Counselor Schnep, please, to read in 219-092. We've had an esteemed attorney sitting on the bench here with us tonight. How are you?
Old business, public hearing, roll call vote, two-thirds. Item 2019-092, amendment of the zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts, to amend and expand the Residence C District to include the entirety of parcel 116014.
I have a first and a second to open to a public hearing. 2019-092, is Elizabeth with us, please? Oh, Paul, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good, welcome, welcome. How are you?
Good evening, Paul Wackrow.
For the rationale, please, Paul.
So this item proposes to amend the zoning map for a small portion of what is now a residential property in Osterville. This 2,900-square-foot portion of 306 West Bay Road was once part of the Crosby Yacht Yard, which you can see immediately to the west. The, to give you some background, the yacht yard was first zoned as marine business in the 1950s, however, and that included this portion that we're talking about that's highlighted in red there. However, this portion was almost immediately in the 50s, sold to an adjacent property, so it was never really used for marine purposes since it was in the, since it's been in the marine business district. The property, the property of 306 West Bay Road has included the portion in red since, for the last two decades, and the current owners of 306 West Bay Road are seeking a map amendment to include the portion of the property, to include it with the surrounding Residence C District. Planning Board unanimously recommended this item on Monday night, and we're joined by Attorney Albert Schultz, who represents the owners of 306 West Bay, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'm opening this for a public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this besides the esteemed attorney, Albert Schultz? Attorney Schultz?
Mr. President, Mr. Wackrow said everything that I was going to say.
And it's 11 o'clock.
It's 11 o'clock. Be happy to answer any questions.
You are a smart attorney. When you win, and you're winning.
I couldn't add anything. He did a great job.
Hearing no further, public, I would ask that we close the public portion of this hearing. All those in favor, signify, oh, everyone in favor of closing the public hearing? Did I get a first and a second on that? Aye, aye. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Thank you very much. It's closed. Counselors, would you like any questions of Attorney Schultz? I got a motion to move the question in a second. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? It's a roll call vote. Thank you, Janet.
Crocker?
Crocker's a yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapscetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Correct. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's the right thing to do, Leah. Thank you. I'm looking on to new business, please. I'm looking for some help. Counselor Rapscetti, please. 2019-151, please.
This is new business, refer to a public hearing on March 21, 2019. Item 2019-151, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $80,000 for burial equipment for the Department of Public Works Cemetery Program, as written.
And for the record, there is a scribbler's error up in the top corner, but next to the wording, it's corrected, 219. Thank you, so noted. All those in favor of referring to a public hearing on 32119, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any nays? Thank you very much. Please record that as unanimous. We have one to read into the record that may be acted upon. On page 27, I would ask Counselor Wallace to give me a hand. Page 27, item 152.
This is new business, may be acted upon. Item number 2019-152, orders supplementing prior loan orders of the town to allow for the application of premium received to project cost. Costs.
Do I have a second? Thank you very much. A first and a second. We have the Director of Finance. Thank you, Mark, for hanging with us.